I am Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this formal meeting to order on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, at this time, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callan, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, and that's and present online is Ms. Melnick. And Ms. Melnick, for the record, can you tell us the reason why you were on Zoom and your location?
Yes, I'm sick and I am at home.
Thank you.
Okay, and also, Ms. Rogers is taking her seat at this time. Would you all who are able, please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
All right. Chair Brown, now we are super excited for Ms. Felton to read the awards and recognitions for tonight. We've got some great students out here.
Good evening, everyone, and I am super excited for our future teachers that are here tonight and with all the other recipients. Yes, we can clap later, but I want to clap now. I want to give a big cheer. That's what I'm talking about. This evening, we are proud to honor the recipients of the 2025 Future Teachers Award, representing comprehensive high schools and the Technical and Career Education Center. These students have shown exceptional commitment to the field of education. Each of these candidates is being recognized for their outstanding academic achievements, dedication, and potential for success. As Future Teachers Award recipients, they will return to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, ready to give back to the community that helped shape their journey. We are excited to present to you our 2025 Future Teachers Award recipient by schools. Give another hand clap! From the Achievable Dream Academy at Lynn Haven, Daniel Shank Jones. From Bayside High School, Alora Otis, Haven Brown, Chariers Dilly, Dildy, Zacharia Hubbard, Trinace Moore, Kayla Shepherd, Vivian Taytral. Bayside High School in the house! From Cox High School, Irma Bailey, Sophia Fisher, Cole Luckford, who couldn't be with us tonight, Chase Parker, Caroline Quick, Colleen Workman. Cox High School! First Colonial High School, Isabella Clark, Gianna Lofer, from First Colonial, my blamada, yes. Those two. Green Run Collegiate, Elena Brittle, Alani, get me right, Alani Brittle, uh, he got me off now. Ariana Coltman, Cockman, Caleb McLennan, who couldn't be with us tonight. These are our two recipients from Green Run Collegiate. Give them a hand! That's it?
That's it, Kathleen.
Give them another hand. And representing Green Run High School, Gina Britt, give her a hand. Representing Calum High School, Joanna Jones. Kinsfield High School, Aleisha Haynes, Alani Ottwee. These two are representing Kinsfield High School. Landstown High School, Adrian Falkenberger Berry, Rachel Hall, Dustin Ristotuit. Yes, I hang in the mire. Joel Westbrook. That's it. Ocean Lakes High School, Thomas Dillard, who could not be with us tonight, Aleah Egon, Alyssa. Marlee Smith, who couldn't be with us tonight, Erin Tukaki, Tuck Aki, pronounce that for me. There you go. Samio Wilson, Sami, Sami, Tamaya. That's it. Princess Anne High School, Destiny Holliday, Holloway, I'm looking at it, Liz Lumagai, Lydia Monsoon, Reese Sherman, Princess Anne High School. Salum High School. Genevee, Giovanni, and you want to pronounce that last name? There you go. Mariah Clark, Ezekiel Clark, Azaya, Nala, Nala Hill, and Hayden Hollowell. Jochi Lynn, Jochi Lynn, Gabrielle Lundie, Aubrey Rockell. Tallwood High School, Anaya Guy, Margaret Landsberg, Gregory Reese, Genevee Stewart, Aiden Toddith. The Virginia Beach Career and Technical Center, Haley Akers, Grace Melendez. Congratulations! Congratulations, and mercy on me. I just received it tonight. It did not match. To all of these amazing students, we can't wait to see you back teaching at Virginia Beach Public Schools at the college. Please join me again and around the applause for all these outstanding Future Teachers! Okay, for Instagram. Right, yeah, Tamaya. They don't. Penetration? Yeah, she gonna tell me, don't tell me.
That was so funny. You said that, you got it. You know your last name.
You did a pretty wonderful job of keeping that light on.
I learned, girl, being an Instagram chick.
Yeah, you said. I think I'll try.
Okay, so this brings us to the adoption of our agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Okay, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Bowen Steele. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to adopt the agenda as presented.
Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes, so the motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, and we are now on the Superintendent's Report and Recognitions. There are no reports or recognitions this evening. We are on to the approval of the meeting minutes. There are two sets of meeting minutes. The first one is going to be the April 8th, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any modifications to the April 8th, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes as presented? Okay, seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the April 8th, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes as presented.
So, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the April 8th, 2025 Meeting Minutes.
Thank you. We are now on to the April 22nd, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any modification to these minutes as presented? Seeing none, I call for the motion. Motion by Dr. Green, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the April 22nd, 2025 School Board Meeting Minutes.
So, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the April 8th, 2025 Meeting Minutes.
Thank you. We are now on to the April 22nd, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any modification to these minutes as presented? Seeing none, I call for the motion. Motion by Dr. Green, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the April 22nd, 2025 School Board Meeting Minutes.
So, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the April 8th, 2025 Meeting Minutes.
Thank you. We are now on to the April 22nd, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any modification to these minutes as presented? Seeing none, I call for the motion. Motion by Dr. Green, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the April 22nd, 2025 School Board Meeting Minutes as presented.
So, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the April 22nd, 2025 Meeting Minutes.
Thank you. We are now on to public comments. The School Board will now hear public comments from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the School Board and the School Division. The purpose for the public comment section is for the School Board to offer an orderly forum to receive comments related to the motion during the meeting. Related, oh, I'm sorry. Related to this business during the meeting. I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chambers to be civil in discussion and decorum, whatever your views are that you wish to express. The School Board wants to hear from you and to ensure all viewpoints and perspectives are heard. The best way to do this is for us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, would you please announce our first speaker?
Madam Chair, before I do that, there are some cancellations. Number 10 canceled, number 16 canceled, and speaker number 13 requested to move online. So that will be our fourth online speaker this evening. Our first set of speakers are our student speakers. We have Madeline Sheets, Bryce Dealti, Hattie Friedman, and then Hope Panouski.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Sheets, and I'm a sophomore currently attending First Colonial High School and the Legal Studies Academy. And I came here to say I'm tired. I'm tired of the School Board that claims to represent me and my peers, not listening to a word we have said. You all claim to represent the students, but you don't listen to the students. There has not been a single student who has come here and said, "I'm so happy you took away DEI. It has made it so unfair for me and my peers, and I thank you, and thank you so much for listening to me." There hasn't. So how are you representing us? Everyone who has come here has said pretty much the same thing. What you are doing is not a good idea, because in some way, it will affect every student in this room. But instead, you decide to listen to the people in the room, who probably don't have kids currently enrolled in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So why are you listening to them? They have not given one solid fact or argument on how DEI is affecting them. So start listening to the students. Secondly, the actions of this board prove a few things. One, you aren't listening to the constituents. You're acting based on your personal belief and not as a representative. Two, you don't care if it's the right thing to do. Otherwise, you would have waited for the courts to rule on the legality of the executive order. Third, even after the courts made it clear that the order and the supporting documents, like the Dear Colleague Letter, are too vague, and you refuse to take a pause. And I'm starting to think that, much like the people who are supporting your vote, you still don't understand what DEI is. You should be embarrassed to have such a fundamental misunderstanding and to refuse to educate yourself. No good will come of this. You're squandering your opportunity to do the right thing. To close, I'd like to quote a line from Hamilton, "History has its eyes on you." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bryce Dealti, Hattie Friedman, and then Hope Panouski.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again. Hi, my name is Bryce Dealti, and if you recall, I spoke here less than a month ago to defend keeping DEI policies upheld. Unfortunately, I am here again to advocate for those of the LGBTQI+ community and other marginalized communities who feel silenced by these actions taken by the School Board. In these past couple of weeks, I have seen students of all race, gender, age, and sexual orientation outraged and shocked that the School Board would turn their backs on the very community they swore to protect. While I understand your hands may be tied, I don't believe the Board wants the community's impression to be that you chose money over morals. Removing DEI from our entire community, in my opinion, is unfair and sends the wrong message to the teacher, parent, and student community. The universal understanding is that the primary purpose of public schools is to develop a productive workforce, create an informed citizenry, and provide opportunities for social mobility. With the suspension of DEI, it counteracts every notion within this understanding. However, students haven't just about attacked and violated due to the lack and removal of these expectations and rules. The people who the rules do not apply to have seen this as a green light and opportunity to criticize, spread hate, and discriminate their peers. I have felt this firsthand in some of my classes and as I'm walking in the hallway. Students have many nicknames for me, such as Tennis Racket, Fruity, and most commonly, the Usler. It is truly sad to experience hate firsthand, because while I'm a strong person and can speak up for myself, others are trapped in these situations that could have easily been avoided if the narrative of inclusivity was promoted by the School Board. Also, without these rules and boundaries, it encourages bullying without protection. How can this be tolerated when the School Board claims it has a zero tolerance policy for bullying? This ties back to my next point, that the suspension isolates people of minorities. And instead of lifting students up, which you claim to do on the Virginia Beach Public Schools website, we are tearing them down, isolating them, and encouraging the labeling of them. I find it disturbing that the Virginia Beach Public Schools website doesn't actually mirror reality. I understand and I'm well aware that policies do evolve and change, and while that is not always influencing people in a negative way, the compass of 2025, which I referenced in my last speech, originally detailed a foundational equality emphasis for each of the six goals. Bafflingly, as I stand before you tonight, I can inform you that the School Board did not live up to its promise with these equality emphasis goals. While we are at a crossroads, the simple question of money or morals recurs. You have the opportunity to consider your previous position and choose morals, but that's completely up to you. No matter what the School Board chooses to say, do, or act upon, I know in my heart that the community will unite together and advocate for what's right. Every student deserves the right to feel safe, gain equal opportunities, and to have a sense of belonging in their community and schools, no matter what, and that is the bottom line. As I said again, together we are stronger. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Hattie Friedman and then Hope Panouski.
Hello, my name is Hattie Friedman, and I'm a sophomore in the Legal Studies Academy at First Colonial High School. I've already taken two APs this week and have another one on Thursday, so trust me, this is not how I wanted to spend my Tuesday night, but here I am. I'm here because I care deeply about what is happening, and I cannot stay silent. I'm here on behalf of all the other students and my friends who could not make it today or were afraid to speak up against this board. I know you have all visited a decent amount of schools in Virginia Beach, so you all know how diverse our student population really is. You have the opportunity to revote yet again to cause, pause Mr. Culpepper's resolution until there is more clear guidance from the federal government on what removing DEI really means. As you've all heard, probably a million times by now, an executive order is not a law, and federal funding is not affected as of right now. The School Division may actually end up losing money due to legal fees. So I ask, how does this help students? I ask you also, what is so scary about DEI? I'm also here to call out Mrs. Brown and Mrs. Weems, the Chair and the Vice Chair of this board, who took it into their own hands to not put resolutions on the agenda that recognize important topics such as Asian American Pacific Islander Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, School Nurse Appreciation Day, et cetera, all of which should have been recognized on April 22nd meeting. They're calling, they're taking away DEI in their own hands, without talking to the Board, without calling it out to the public, without putting it on the agenda. The six of you have made the decision to align yourself with racist, anti-Semitic, homophobic, MAGA agenda. My peers and I are concerned about what these policies, what the rewrites will do to us. When DEI structures are dismissed, it leaves students open to discrimination. I've emailed the Board and had a very short chat with Mr. Bowen Steele about what exactly passing this policy will do, and I have yet to receive a clear answer from this board. You all do not know what passing this policy will do. That is clear. All you know is it should be done because Donald Trump said so. Before this meeting, I was in tears, because I feel like my voice doesn't matter, and what I say, nothing will come of it. But nevertheless, I'm here, hoping to be proven wrong. I hope that this board proves me wrong tonight, and I urge you to please pause the suspension of DEI to show the students, the future voters, and the people you swore to represent, that you really care about us. If you're racist, just come out and say it at this point. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hope Panouski.
Good evening. My name is Hope Panouski, and I am a junior at the Legal Studies Academy at First Colonial. I would like to second what Hattie said. I have an AP exam tomorrow, actually AP Lang, so this speech kind of did help me prepare for it, having to write it for you guys. So you heard from me last week about the benefits of diversity, equity, and inclusion that I see in school as a student, and how these initiatives don't actually harm people. However, last meeting after I left to go home, you as a board voted down pausing this policy that is focused on getting rid of these programs in order to comply with the current administration's executive order to stop racial indoctrination. What I find hard to wrap my head around is that your lawyer stood up here telling you that there are multiple cases going on that seem to lean in the direction that this order is unlawful because of its vagueness, but you still didn't stop the enactment of this policy. It makes it seem like you as a board are not just trying to comply with the law- You should be embarrassed to have such a fundamental misunderstanding and to refuse to educate yourself. No good will come of this. You're squandering your opportunity to do the right thing. To close, I'd like to quote a line from Hamilton, "History has its eyes on you." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bryce Dealti, Hattie Friedman, and then Hope Panouski.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again. Hi, my name is Bryce Dealti, and if you recall, I spoke here less than a month ago to defend keeping DEI policies upheld. Unfortunately, I am here again to advocate for those of the LGBTQI+ community and other marginalized communities who feel silenced by these actions taken by the school board. In these past couple of weeks, I have seen students of all race, gender, age, and sexual orientation outraged and shocked that the school board would turn their backs on the very community they swore to protect. While I understand your hands may be tied, I don't believe the board wants the community's impression to be that you chose money over morals. Removing DEI from our entire community, in my opinion, is unfair and sends the wrong message to the teacher, parent, and student community. The universal understanding is that the primary purpose of public schools is to develop a productive workforce, create an informed citizenry, and provide opportunities for social mobility. With the suspension of DEI, it contra, it counteracts every notion within this understanding. However, students haven't just about attacked and violated due to the lack and removal of these expectations and rules. But people who the rules do not apply to have seen this as a green light and opportunity to criticize, spread hate, and discriminate their peers. I have felt this firsthand in some of my classes and as I'm walking in the hallway. Students have many nicknames for me, such as Tennis Racket, Fruity, and most commonly, the Ussler. It is truly sad to experience hate firsthand because while I'm a strong person and can speak up for myself, others are trapped in these situations that could have easily been avoided if the narrative of inclusivity was promoted by the school board. Also, without these rules and boundaries, it encourages bullying without protection. How can this be tolerated when the school board claims it has a zero tolerance policy for bullying? This ties back to my next point, that the suspension isolates people of minorities. And instead of lifting students up, which you claim to do on the Virginia Beach Public Schools website, we are tearing them down, isolating them, and encouraging the labeling of them. I find it disturbing that the Virginia Beach Public Schools website doesn't actually mirror reality. I understand and I'm well aware that policies do evolve and change, and while that is not always influencing people in a negative way, the compass of twenty-twenty-five, which I referenced in my last speech, originally detailed a foundational equality emphasis for each of the six goals. Bafflingly, bafflingly, as I stand before you tonight, I can inform you that the school board did not live up to its promise with these equality emphasis goals. While we are at a crossroads, the simple question of money or morals recurs. You have the opportunity to consider your previous position and choose morals, but that's completely up to you. No matter what the school board chooses to say, do, or act upon, I know in my heart that the community will unite together and advocate for what's right. Every student deserves the right to feel safe, gain equal opportunities, and to have a sense of belonging in their community and schools, no matter what, and that is the bottom line. As I said again, together we are stronger. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Hattie Friedman and then Hope Panouski.
Hello, my name is Hattie Friedman, and I'm a sophomore in the Legal Studies Academy at First Colonial High School. I've already taken two APs this week and have another one on Thursday, so trust me, this is not how I wanted to spend my Tuesday night, but here I am. I'm here because I care deeply about what is happening and I cannot stay silent. I'm here on behalf of all the other students and my friends who cannot make it today, or were afraid to speak up against this board. I know you have all visited a decent amount of schools in Virginia Beach, so you all know how diverse our student population really is. You have the opportunity to revote yet again to cause, co, pause Mr. Culpepper's resolution until there is more clear guidance from the federal government on what removing DEI really means. As you've all heard probably a million times by now, an executive order is not a law, and federal funding is not affected as of right now. The school division may actually end up losing money due to legal fees, so I ask, how does this help students? I ask you also, what is so scary about DEI? I'm also here to call out Mrs. Brown and Mrs. Weems, the chair and the vice chair of this board, who took it into their own hands to not put resolutions on the agenda that recognize important topics such as Asian American Pacific Islander Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, School Nurse Appreciation Day, et cetera. All of which should have been recognized on April twenty-second meeting. They're calling, they're taking away DEI in their own hands, without talking to the board, without calling it out to the public, without putting it on the agenda. The six of you have made the decision to align yourself with racist, anti-Semitic, homophobic MAGA agenda. My peers and I are concerned about what these policies, what the rewrites will do to us. When DEI structures are dismissed, it leaves students open to discrimination. I've emailed the board and had a very short chat with Mr. Bowenstiel about what exactly passing this policy will do, and I have yet to receive a clear answer from this board. You all do not know what passing this policy will do. That is clear. All you know is it should be done because Donald Trump said so. Before this meeting, I was in tears because I feel like my voice doesn't matter, and what I say, nothing will come of it. But nevertheless, I'm here, hoping to be proven wrong. I hope that this board proves me wrong tonight, and I urge you to please pause the suspension of DEI to show the students, the future voters, and the people you swore to represent, that you really care about us. If you're racist, just come out and say it at this point. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hope Panouski.
Good evening. My name is Hope Panouski, and I am a junior at the Legal Studies Academy at First Colonial. I would like to second what Hattie said. I have an AP exam tomorrow, actually AP Lang, so this speech kind of did help me prepare for it, having to write it for you guys. Um, so you heard from me last week about the benefits of diversity, equity, and inclusion that I see in school as a student, and how these initiatives don't actually harm people. However, last meeting after I left to go home, you as a board voted down pausing this policy that is focused on getting rid of these programs in order to comply with the current administration's executive order to stop racial indoctrination. What I find hard to wrap my head around is that your lawyer stood up here telling you that there are multiple cases going on that seem to lean in the direction that this order is unlawful because of its vagueness, but you still didn't stop the enactment of this policy. It makes it seem like you as a board are not just trying to comply with the law. If you truly were, you would have waited to see what the people who interpret the law, AKA judges and the judicial system, say about this kind of executive order. So I ask you, if you support these kind of policies, just say you support these policies and don't operate under the veil that you're simply trying to comply with the law. Many of your fellow board members and members of the community, it is your responsibility to defend, also known as the students, have told you how they feel on these issues. Your job is to make sure that I, as a student of the Virginia Beach school system, am getting the education and community I deserve in school. What isn't your job is to be a lapdog for the community members who don't have kids in the school system and think that just because they think a certain way, that everyone around them must conform to these ideas. What you, why are you listening to people who aren't me, my parents, or educators on the environment I should be raised in? On people that should be allowed to be supported and encouraged, on the community that I and my fellow members should find in school? I would just like for you to notice how many people here support DEI initiatives that are taking the time out of their day to speak to you, or parents within the school system, who are speaking because their kids can't, or speaking with their kids. DEI is what many students and parents want because it helps them improve, grow, and find a space where students feel safe. I ask you today that you listen to what your students, parents, and educators are saying and let their teachers do their job without fear that if they talk about how the Europeans colonized the natives, they will lose their job. Let your students discover and explore new cultures. Let them learn about history to its fullest and everywhere the United States, as a nation, fail minority groups. Let us grow and stop trying to fit us in a box because the current administration told you to put us there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Kimball, then Jen Sheldon, then Mindy Friedman.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Mandy Kimball, and I'm a kindergarten teacher here in Virginia Beach. After listening the past two weeks to opinions on the resolution, I feel there are a lot of things I would like to address. Let's review the definition of equity. Equity in education is reducing barriers and promoting an environment where everyone can achieve their best. Everyone, not promoting one group over the other, not lowering standards. I earned my master's degree of education at DePaul University, a Catholic university in the heart of Chicago, one of my most diverse areas I've ever lived. Growing up in Northern Virginia, back when it was actual farmland, I lived a pretty sheltered life. The experience that I gained living and working and volunteering with the children in Chicago Public Schools profoundly changed my life and shaped my philosophy of teaching. Most teaching programs require you to take diversity courses for certification. Most teaching programs require you to, oh, sorry, and whether it's fundamental practices of teaching elementary math or basic psychology, the ultimate thread of teaching courses is fulfilling all the needs of all your students for academic achievement. Being able to reach children of diverse backgrounds is so fundamental and foundational that Virginia Beach's own teacher evaluation standards include culturally responsive teaching and equitable practices. For those of you who don't know, when you begin teaching the district, you are on a probationary contract for three years. Each year, you have two or three formal observations by administration. At the end of the year, you are evaluated by a rubric provided by the district with guidelines from the VDOE. There are ten performance standards in which teachers are supposed to be effective in teaching standards such as professional knowledge, instructional planning, instructional delivery, et cetera. The definition for performance standard six, culturally responsive teaching and equitable practices is as follows. The teacher demonstrates a commitment to equity and provides instruction and classroom strategies that result in culturally inclusive and responsive learning environments and achievement for all students. All. I would also like you to know that, no, our standards are not being lowered and our curriculum is not watered down. We have the Virginia Standards of Learning that are followed by the entire state, and as teachers, we are required that our lessons align with them. Our math and reading scores are slowly rising and are well above state average. Our SOL test scores rank the highest in the area. Do we have work to do? Yes, but this is not the picture that was portrayed last week. Ms. Melnick is correct. Our students are coming into our classrooms with trauma and struggles no children should have to endure. When we remove the language supporting their different backgrounds and without recognizing and addressing their struggles, we are not being true to our students, their past, or their educational experiences. These revisions and guided policies are heartbreaking as a teacher and will not attract the best and brightest teachers to our city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jen Sheldon, then Mindy Friedman, then Elizabeth Shore.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight about the recent anti-DEI resolution passed by the school board. In November of twenty-twenty-two, David Culpepper told a reporter, "I ran first and foremost on parental rights." In twenty-twenty-two, Ms. Weems told Ballipedia, "Parental rights and input must be at the forefront of all policy decisions made by the school board." In twenty-twenty-four, Ms. Dwyer answered a Ballipedia questionnaire and stated it is almost, it is also important to weigh all sides of an issue and receive input from the public prior to making a decision. We must be sure that every decision we make is for the betterment of academic achievement and not a political agenda. Ms. Brown's own school board page states, "Kathleen vows to fight for parents' rights to provide full public comment on issues that impact their children and will thoroughly and openly consider their input before voting on any policy changes." The majority of parents that have come to these recent meetings have spoken in favor of DEI initiatives in our school. Yet your votes show you have ignored their concerns and instead represent a small fringe right-wing extremist minority. What happened to your campaign promise to put parental input at the forefront of policy decisions and not fulfill a political agenda? I know school board member Weems addressed the programs that would not be affected by the resolution passed on April eighth. Of those mentioned that wouldn't be affected was the recovery school. I asked the school board how that is possible when the recovery school clearly falls under DEI. It is clear that a school created to support a small group of children, I believe around seven from Virginia Beach, for such a substantial price tag will ultimately fall under review. Not only is a recovery school a form of DEI, but how will the recovery school succeed without incorporating DEI into its curriculum? The Association of Recovery Schools has made the following mission statement. "We at the Association of Recovery Schools acknowledge the direct connection between recovery, education, and social justice. We are committed to being visible and vocal in supporting the diversity of people through inclusive, anti-racist, and equitable practices." Members of schools are expected to share in this commitment, which is reinforced by the practices described above, as well as regular diversity, equity, and inclusion training for staff. These practices foster a culture of respect, understanding, and empathy within the RHS community. It is clear that the majority right-wing extremist school board is not here to represent the majority of its constituents. It is unclear to me why many of you even want to serve on the school board. It clearly isn't for the teachers when you vote down a reasonable salary increase, and it is clearly not for the students when you eliminate programs that seek to foster and help develop their growth and positive educational outcomes. We will see many of you at the ballot box in twenty-twenty-six, but it is highly unlikely that we will see you on the dice again after people of this city ha, have cast their votes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mindy Friedman, Elizabeth Shore, and then Jean Fitzhugh.
Good evening. In nineteen thirty-seven, my grandma was just six years old when her family made the difficult decision to leave everything behind. They sold what they could and packed the rest in suitcases and gathered at the family farm near Ossenbrook, Germany to say their goodbyes. Many tragically would be forever. Thanks to a relative already in the US and the help of a congressman, they secured visas and boarded the SS Washington. Most of their family wasn't so lucky. After processing through Ellis Island and receiving Americanized names, they boarded a train bound for Opelika, Alabama, a small southern town that welcomed them with open arms. The community even threw them a parade. There, they rebuilt their lives. My grandma attended local schools, learned English with a southern accent, and her family opened the department store on Main Street. That's the America I was raised to believe in, one where differences were welcome and diversity was seen as a strength. I wonder today, would Americans still be so welcoming to families like mine? That question hits especially hard after seeing Policy five dash four gutted by the PRC. The first line, "The school board values that diversity in our community and staff" was erased. That wasn't just a line of text, it was a statement of principle. Let's pause to consider that. What does it mean to value something? To value something means that you treat it with care and respect. If we say we don't value something, we're saying it's not important, that it doesn't belong, it doesn't have worth. And what is diversity? It's the practice of including people from different backgrounds, identities, and experiences. The opposite is sameness, uniformity. What we choose to value in our schools defines our community. Stripping DEI from our core values sends a clear troubling message. Differences aren't welcome, conformity is. The policy has just been reduced from something meaningful to something hollow. This isn't just policy change, it reflects a mindset with dangerous historical undertones. It charts the course and sets the compass back to nineteen thirty's Germany, and I refuse to let history repeat itself. Mr. Bowenstiel, your silence for the last two meetings is disappointing. This is not the time for passive observation. Leadership means standing up and asking hard questions. I respect your efforts for visiting all the schools, but being present isn't just, isn't enough. Are you truly listening? Or are you simply here to play a role as a rubber stamp for the chair and the vice chair who push policies that align with the president, who undermines the Constitution and targets public education? Ms. Dwyer, your repetitive tardiness, phone scrolling, and lack of engagements during meetings speaks volume for itself. Are you here just to collect a paycheck and to advance a political agenda rather than serve the students and the families in your community? That needs to be called out. We must fight. We must protect the programs and the services that lift up all students, not just the ones that fit a narrow mold. We must show that we care about every child, not just some. We can't go back.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Shore, Jean Fitzhugh, and then Heather Sype.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Shore, and I'm a former Virginia Beach Schools teacher, parent, and citizen of District Six. This is now the fourth time I've addressed this board regarding the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Resolution passed on April eighth. Ms. Brown, as board chair, you made a statement at the April eighth meeting just before the resolution vote, and I quote, "We are not in compliance with this at this time. We are just not, and we have to get into compliance. We are going to lose funding for federal and reduced-cost lunch, reading materials for vulnerable students, funding for Title I schools, special education, and those that need it most." Well, each time I have spoken before the board, your fake urgency justification for the resolution has been more and more exposed, while the potential for our school division to be open to civil rights violations and litigation has increased. There is no legitimate rationale for the rushed April eighth resolution. It is simply the board majority acting to force its white fragility ideology upon each member of this school community. You thought you had cover for this ideological action, but that disappeared, first with the deadline extension, then with the three court orders on April twenty-fourth. A resolution of this ma, magnitude demands due process and adherence to proper procedure. This obviously did not occur. Per the April twenty-second presentation by Ms. Woodhouse, our programs and operations have been in full compliance with federal and state civil rights laws. The April eighth resolution undermines this fact. It was hastily drafted and passed, and its language is vague and confusing, with the full board and public, public intentionally left in the dark. The board majority continues to lament that there is so much confusion and miss and disinformation. Well, of course, there is. You do not even know how your resolution will impact our programs and school community. No guidance has been communicated to division administrators, teachers, and staff, so they are forced to interpret this resolution on their own. This fact alone should strike fear of misinterpretation, violations of civil and constitutional rights, and litigation against VBCPS. In fact, the NEA lawsuit specifically enjoins the federal government from enforcing penalties upon VBCPS. What does that mean? It means you, our board majority, owns this. Our division is now exposed. The sad thing is you know better. Every board member knows we are a data-driven division. The programs we developed are based on achievement data and school empowerment data. They are not designed to signal out a specific race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, or disability. They are created to address gaps in achievement and student well-being to ensure every student can meet the high standards set by this division. Through data analysis, we offer programs to both lift struggling students and challenge those already achieving. We do not help one group at the expense of another. It is time to stop this, pause this resolution, hands off Policy five point four language, and act responsibly.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Jean Fitzhugh, Heather Sype, and then Mary Arrington.
DEI is the soft bigotry of low expectations. It is the assessment that says, "I don't like me, and I'm going to hate you too." Well, I've had enough hate. In fact, we're going to put an end to it tonight. Shakespeare wrote, "When troubles come, they come in battalions." Well, the mercies of God come in battalions, and we see them on the horizon. And the voters in your district come in battalions. We're going to Curricomb the countryside until we lift up the destiny of every child in your district who wants an education free of hate, free of bigotry, free of low expectations, free of "I can't do that," free of "this is too hard," free of "I don't know how to read," free of self-pity taught by adults who want to create voters out of a dependent class that says, "Only the government can parent me, only the government can support me, only the government can tell me what to do." Well, I've got a book for you, Helping Your Child Become a Responsible Citizen, and it's written by the government. No more grooming, no more interrupting the happy life of a normal childhood. You're done. Do it in your home, on your time, with your spouse, and your child. Got it? Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Intelligence is not enough. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of education." Martin Luther King Senior went to Germany in nineteen thirty-four as Michael King, but changed his name and his son's name after finding the example of a devout white German monk. How about them apples? It began in the American South and culminated in a vast array of legislation which still stands and makes redundant what has followed. In August nineteen sixty-three, Michael King's renamed son stood at the Lincoln Memorial and shook a nation with his words. Let me apply those words for you tonight. I have a dream when all the third graders in Virginia Beach can read. I have a dream when all the sixth graders can pass their math SOLs. I have a dream when the seventh graders will use their library card, not the race card. I have a dream when the mind of each child is filled with knowledge, wisdom, and understanding, not gender dysphoria. I have a dream when each child's heart is filled with faith, hope, and love, not doubt, fear, and darkness. I have a dream tonight. Oh, Democrat, the days are numbered when you shackle the boys and girls with your doctrine of hate and limitation, groom our children for sexual activity, not hard work, obey the overlords of your party and chant, "Pause, pause, pause," which is code for oppress, oppress, oppress. I see battalions of voters on the horizon who want a free America, a free Commonwealth, a free Virginia Beach, where little boys and little girls hold hands with their mothers and fathers and say, "Free at last, free at last, thank God almighty, we're free at last."
Our next speaker is Heather Sype, then Mary Arrington, then Elaine Lombardi.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Heather Sype, and I am the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I'm here this evening to address the teacher evaluation rubric as pertains to the proposed changes to Policy five four and the VBCPS strategic frameworks. In the definition of Standard One, professional knowledge, teachers are evaluated on their ability to provide relevant learning experiences. Teachers need to know and understand their students and be culturally responsive in order for the learning experiences to be relevant to the student. In Standard Two, instructional planning, teachers are evaluated on their use of not only the Virginia Standards of Learning in the school's curriculum, but also student data and research-based strategies that meet the needs of all students. Differentiation of instruction and activities to meet the diverse needs of our students, engaging in equitable practices to ensure no student is left faltering. Let's look at Standard Three, instructional delivery, and Standard Four, assessment of and for student learning. In order to be highly effective, a teacher must fluidly modify strategies, materials, and groupings to optimize students' opportunities to learn, and use assessment data, reexamine, and fine-tune teaching based on these data. Modify, reexamine, and fine-tune. This is educational equity. Next is Standard Five, learning environment. The highly effective teacher ensures all students have input and feel a part of the classroom community. They are also to build strong relationships, skillfully adjust to ensure personalized learning, foster opportunities for discourse based on multiple perspectives, and ensure that student voice and choice are sought out as a valued part of the student learning experience. This hits all three: diversity, equity, and inclusion. Standard Six, culturally responsive teaching and equitable practices. There is an entire rubric standard on this. Standard Seven, professionalism, demands teachers demonstrate a commitment to professional ethics, collaborate and communicate appropriately, and take responsibility for the personal professional growth that results in the enhancement of student learning. We cannot do this if we are tossing out decades of research-based best practices and going back to the dark ages where words like diversity, equity, and inclusion are taboo. And finally, there's Standard Eight, student academic progress. Teachers are to act on student results to revise goals or form new goals that result in academic growth for each population of learners. Collect a variety of work, employ authentic measures of learning, such as Collect a variety of work, employ authentic measures of learning, such as portfolios and student reflections. What a diverse amount of student produce work to assess, and what an equitable way for students to show their learning. But now, with the direction of the majority of the School Board, Policy Five-Four, formerly educational equity, is being gutted, and the strategic framework is having any language around diversity, equity, inclusion, and culturally responsive teaching stripped. How are our teachers supposed to be evaluated on a rubric that demands the very things we're eliminating?
Our next speaker is Mary Arrington, Elaine Lombardi, and then Abby Cossey.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board members, and Dr. Robertson. Forgive me for paraphrasing what one of my colleagues so eloquently told the Board in the past. We do not create policy or delete policy based on fear. Yet that is exactly what Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Ms. Weems, Mr. Bowenstiel, Ms. Dwyer, and Mr. Culpepper want to do. At the current time, there is no reason to comply with an ambiguous executive order that is currently being adjudicated and cannot be enforced. The courts have issued an injunction preventing districts from certifying compliance with the executive order if they employ any NEA members, and yet, some board members want to remove diversity, equity, and inclusion and comply with the executive order, which will only lead to the district incurring more legal bills to defend an indefensible position. For a group of elected representatives who like to tout that they are fiscally conservative and put students first, your actions reflect the opposite of your words. Has anyone kept a tally of how many personnel hours and dollars have been spent to remove diversity, equity, and inclusion from all district publications? From the website, how many personnel hours are being spent to remove diversity, equity, and inclusion from the curriculum? Who has decided what is diversity, equity, and inclusion? What exactly, word for word, was the criteria used to remove diversity, equity, and inclusion? The entire process of removing diversity, equity, and inclusion has not been transparent. It started with Mr. Culpepper's eleventh-hour attempt to add a resolution to gut Policy Five-Four without public comment. Since that meeting, the lack of transparency continued with the PRC revising Policy Five-Four into something that does not reflect the VBCPS core values: to put students first, seek growth, be open to change, do great work together, and value differences. It is time for the Board to truly put students first, all students, and forego signing the certification mentioned in the executive order. Show our students that you care for them. Show some courage, and continue to support our diverse students. Give them what they need to be on an equal footing, and include all of them in everything.
Our next speaker is Elaine Lombardi, Abby Cossey, and then Cody Connor.
Hi, good evening. Dr. Robertson, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, and the rest of the Board. Hope you had a good Mother's Day. I did. A week ago, I had the opportunity to attend a town hall hosted by Ms. Rogers. I'm told it was the first of many. There were about fifty of us in the audience, not bad for a first-time event. It was quite informative, and we had the chance to ask questions later, and I look forward to attending more. I highly encourage each of you to do the same thing within your own districts, and when you do, listen to what your constituents are saying. Listen to what we're saying. Ms. Brown, I really appreciate the work you're doing. I think you're trying very hard to do the very best job you can. But I believe you'll find that your constituents place much more value in diversity, equity, and inclusion than your vote indicates. Ms. Weems, I continue to be completely flabbergasted at your vote to end diversity, equity, and inclusion programs at our school division while simultaneously pushing for a recover school. So these ten students with very specific needs get equity, but to heck with everybody else? How do you square that in your mind? Ms. Dwyer, when my students have three tardies, I have to call their parents and inform them that continued tardies will result in ISS. Is that what we need to do with you? Please respect your constituents and the other board members enough to be here on time consistently, and also to learn the difference between equity and equality. I'm sure most of the folks up on this dais can help you out with that. Mr. Callen, my guess is that you do, in fact, listen to your constituents, and I bet you speak with them frequently. And Mr. Bowenstiel, I don't know very much about you. I don't know that any of us do. But I do appreciate your consistency in being here, and I want to thank both of you for that. Please go out and have those town halls. Mr. Culpepper, do it too. You can do it. It was great. Before you all vote tonight, I want to ask, which programs would you cut? At the town hall, I learned that the ATC has been told to table their Girls in STEM organization. That's disgraceful. What about the African-American Male Summit? I've attended that summit and was highly impressed. Please note that I am neither African-American nor male, but I was welcomed, and I really welcomed the opportunity to learn some things there. Now, I know that IDEA and ADA are federal laws, and they won't be impacted by this, but just like, just like we're hearing about the other documents, IEPs and 504s are full of words like "inclusion" and "equity." They're in there. Are all those documents going to need to be rewritten? What a colossal waste of time and valuable but limited resources. Even our mission statement will need to be reworded, and we might as well just throw the compass to 2030 right out the window. Again, a ridiculous waste of time and resources. Let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater, folks. We can do this.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Abby Cossey, Cody Connor, and then Natalie Bray.
Good evening. My name is Abby Cossey, and, Mr. Culpepper, please note I am a constituent, a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach, and also work at a parish in your district. My opinion is my own as a parent of students at Princess Anne High School and Plaza NYPD. On April eighth, I imagine that there are two reasons why members voted for the resolutions in such an expeditious manner. Number one, you align yourself with the current administration and oppose diversity, equity, and inclusion and wokeness. Number two, you were greatly concerned about federal funding cuts for the most vulnerable and acted in haste. If your reason was the latter, then tonight you have another chance to hit the pause button and wait for the courts to rule. Because without diversity, equity, and inclusion policy and programs, the funding you are trying to protect is only half of the solution for a child to fully flourish. It requires effort, intentionality, and relationships to see students of beyond the color of their skin and their economic circumstance. In the words of a Tulsa massacre survivor, quote, "Injustice plus time does not equal justice," end quote. In nineteen seventy-three, a gas station attendant on Holland Road refused to pump gas for my mom and asked her to leave because the owner said they didn't serve her kind. In the nineteen seventies, my sister attended preschool in Little Neck, and a classmate told her she was too dark to play with. In two thousand and three, I was jogging through my Birchwood neighborhood, and as I ran past Malibu Elementary, boys from the basketball court started to yell, "Ching, ching, chong, chong." In two thousand and fifteen, I was working at a church on Lynn Haven Parkway and ran across the street to get my car from the shop. As I made it to the median, I heard someone yell, "Run," end word, "run." And I turned to see a white man in a Mustang drive-off. My parents never taught me Tagalog, but rather taught me to assimilate white, to protect me, because injustice plus time does not equal justice. African-Americans make up fourteen percent of the population, and, Mr. Culpepper, in my almost five years at the parish with over a hundred and fifty students enrolled in programs each year, do you know how many black students I've had? Zero. If you think you don't need to be intentional about diversity, equity, and inclusion, ask a team of students in District Eight who are U.S. citizens having called wetbacks or whose classmates have threatened to call ICE on their families. Children learn what they live. And students have told you and will tell you diversity, equity, and inclusion policies and programs don't hurt them. They empower them to be kind, compassionate global citizens. If school board is just a political stepping stone for you, no. Know this: They will be at voting age when you run for your next office. They will remember who listened to them and who did not, lest they forget your constituents will be here to remind them. Vote to pause. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cody Connor, Natalie Bray, and then Linda Lavender.
I don't know if you are attacking DEI because you convinced yourself that racism and discrimination doesn't exist anymore, or if you've just convinced yourself that it's okay. What I do know is that white supremacist groups still feel emboldened enough to march openly in American streets. People are proudly proclaiming themselves racist and bigots on social media and even national television, and I know that it'll be those people that are cheering and applauding for you the loudest when you decide to dismantle diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. And the fact that it doesn't give you pause, that it doesn't make you feel sick and slimy, tells me everything I need to know about you. When I look at you, the six of you that'll vote against this, I'm disgusted, but I'm also grateful. I'm grateful for all the, all the experiences I had that kept me from being like you. You see, there's racists and bigots in my family. I heard the end word and derogatory jokes growing up, but when I found myself on my own before I'd even graduated high school, that family wasn't there to help me. My friend, the Liana's family, was. They're Wadimalan immigrants. If it wasn't for them, I probably would have gotten a lot more trouble than I did. Did you know that immigrants are less likely to commit crimes than U.S. citizens statistically? And then there was my friend Trey's mom, taking care of all those kids all on her own, still somehow always able still to find a prayer and a plate for me, too. Did you know that black mothers are more than three times as likely to be single moms than white mothers statistically? It was the queer kids that helped me learn how to navigate life on the streets. Did you know that LGBTQ kids are more than twice as likely than their peers to be homeless statistically? But because of those kids, when my child came out to me, I was able to be the father that they needed, despite all of the religious indoctrination I'd been subjected to. Did you know it's more likely your priest will be a predator than your kid will be trans statistically? Now, I know you don't care about my stories or my statistics. Your fear and ignorance has got you so turned around. Rather than embracing the future, you're clinging desperately to echoes of the past. But that future, it's still coming, and it doesn't look much like you statistically. Shout out to the student speakers. You may be blind, but these kids aren't. They see you. More than that, they see that you do not see them. So tonight, after you vote against their future and go home to bask in the approval of racists and bigots, don't mistake this for a day that we stood in your way and couldn't stop you. No, today's the day you decided to stand in the way of these kids and their future. And someday, sooner than you think, they're going to run right over you and not even look back. Make good decisions.
Our next speaker is Natalie Bray, then Linda Lavender, then Darrell Clark.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Bray. I live in District Eight, and I have three school-aged children. This is my third time speaking to you on the topic of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. I'll share some of my children's personal experiences with DEI in the classroom, but first, a brief recap. Despite its politicization, each part of DEI reflects a longstanding best practices in education. Students learn best when leadership, decision-makers, educators, and peers reflect a wide range of viewpoints, experiences, and demographics. This is diversity. Students have different needs, and they succeed when they receive support for those needs. This is equity. Including students with special needs in general education classrooms benefits both of those students and their typically developing peers. This is what inclusion means. These are all research-based best practices in education. My children and I often talk about current events, including these very School Board meetings. Like many kids their age, they understand that DEI supports fairness and belonging, core values of good education. Here are some of their experiences. One of my daughters is quiet, academically driven, and her classroom behavior is impeccable. She was often seated next to inclusion students who needed extra support for their behavior or understanding of the material. Working alongside peers with different learning needs shaped her into a deeply attentive, perceptive, and empathetic person. She's an incluter, and this is an important life and workplace skill. Another daughter recently told me of a spontaneous lunch table conversation about Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month this month. Her classmates shared their experience of family traditions and cultural foods, and she came home excited to learn more. That kind of natural, joyful curiosity about diverse cultures is something we should nurture, not erase. My third daughter has a spiky learning profile. She excels in language arts but needs support in math. She's a learner who benefits from differentiation, and her teachers responded. One tutored her in math before school. Another voluntarily read through her extracurricular creative writing. She was supported and encouraged to the point of excelling in school. These acts of equity helped her grow, and we are forever grateful to her teachers. So, back to the conversations I have with my kids. They want to know how you, who are supposed to be good stewards of the school community, could possibly want to do away with best practices in education. How can you disregard what you've heard from the students who've spoken in support of DEI at these meetings? How could you ignore the opportunity to pause before overhauling the equity policy? I don't have good answers for my kids, do you? What do you say to your families when they question your recent actions? You must know that you're not on the right side of this one in the eyes of young people. Reconsider your choices. Pause the April eighth referendum to operate and operate VBCPS with an unedited Policy Five-Four. You still have time to redeem yourselves as good stewards of our schools.
And that is time. Our next, our next speaker is Linda Lavender, then Darrell Clark, then Cheryl Smith.
My name is Linda Lavender. I am a cyber defense teacher at the Advanced Technology Center. I've been with the Division for twenty-seven years. I'm also a career switcher. As a female working in STEM, I know firsthand the challenges that our women face in this field. I'm here today because some of you have a very mistaken understanding of what DEI is and what DEI is not. You plan to cut Policy Five-Four with some mistaken belief that somehow this policy does not benefit all of our students. The problem is, all of our students are not the same. There's girls, there's boys, there's white students, there's students that are not white, there's students that speak multiple languages, and there are students that are only ESL students. You are now telling me with this decision as an educator that I'm no longer to value and embrace the uniqueness of these students or focus on the needs of these students. We have worked very hard at the ATC since it opened to promote and encourage students to join and become part of the programs that you so rightly have supported over these years. Diversity has been a big initiative. We have sponsored a women in technology organization for the past several years. This group helps our female students empower themselves to deal with situations that they will encounter in a predominantly male workforce. Four of our students were just recognized last month in Richmond by the National WIT Organization for their outstanding successes and potential of where they will grow in STEM. Sadly, now you have provided us no direction on where we're going. Our WIT club is in hibernation, likely, and hopefully not gone. That's just one of the examples of the recklessness disregard for the devaluation of diversity in our classrooms. What happens when the next demand comes in? Are we going to have DEI book bans like Code Girls, women who probably saved your lives, our lives, in World War II? Or the Navajo Code Talkers, who, as you know, probably saved many, many lives during World War II? If I speak French to my NATO student, am I violating your policy? We meet the students where they are and who they are. That is what we do as educators. You've drawn a line on the School Board values, the diversity in our community and staff. That impacts me. It impacts my students. It impacts my children, my grandchildren, and my community. We fought very, very hard to make this school division exemplary, and with a stroke of your red pen and putting politics in front of students, you've managed to take that away from us. Please reconsider this vote. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Darrell Clark, then Cheryl Smith, then Diane Muscovac.
Y'all need to pause and rescind this whole thing. And honestly, I don't even think the money really matters. I feel like even if y'all weren't at risk of losing funding, I think y'all would still try to pull this anyway, because your history shows that. I mean, this whole Student First in Virginia group, y'all are just... I mean, this whole Student First in Virginia group, y'all are just sour degradation of the education, period. All six of y'all, and Manning too. Just terrible, terrible. Ween said at the April, she said in her last meeting that the will of this board voted on the April 8th resolution, which doesn't make sense to me because it seems like it was more of a move for y'all's agenda, especially with not everyone was here for the meeting and with it being without public notice. It's real slime dog stuff. And it just, I mean, what would y'all do next? You know, if Trump were to say, take all the banned books out and set them on fire in the parking lot, would you do that too? Would you try to segregate schools again? I wouldn't be surprised, to be honest. Also, y'all need to take Martin Luther King Jr.'s name off y'all's website, because right now it says, "We support the teachings of Martin Luther King Jr. that one should be judged by the context of their character and not the color of their skin. We oppose socialist equity agendas that promote equal outcomes rather than an opportunity for all." The content of y'all's character is so ugly. So whatever you gotta do to cleanse yourselves of that, yeah, I know you're smiling. I don't know if you think it's funny or what, but it says a lot about you, which is, of course, no surprise. Callan said that he wants there to be more traditional learning as opposed to progressive. I mean, we're not stupid. We know what that means. I would love to hear you explain, but I feel like we already know what that means. It's just, y'all keep treating these students like they're coming up here to do extra credit when they're talking to y'all about their lived experiences and their peers' experiences. This is not a game to them. This is their lives. This is the futures' lives too. And, you know, like Cody said, I mean, they're going to roll over on you. So my thing would be to abandon y'all's whole fascist, you know, plan that should have an action, or else, I don't know, you're going to suffer some other way.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Cheryl Smith, Diane Muscovac, and then Dr. Rick Klobar.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Smith. I live in District Five, and I'm here to talk to you about some of the benefits of diversity, equity, and inclusion programs in our public schools. I have a master's degree in education. I taught in public schools for 38 years, 16 years in middle school and high school, 22 years in elementary. It's my understanding that some of you do not have any teaching experience, but I still hope you will base your decisions on actual facts and your mission statement, not Republican talking points. Will DEI programs help empower all students to reach their potential? Will these programs help create an environment where all students feel safe and included? The scientific answer is yes. So let me address just one condition that has a negative effect on learning: stress. During any stressful event, cortisol and adrenaline are released into the bloodstream, putting body into survival mode. The stress response does not make us smart, creative, or rational. It also takes a long time for these hormones to be filtered out of the body. So if a child has a stressful event at home before school, it could take hours before her brain is ready to learn. I wish I had more time to share all the situations that cause kids stress, but you all have been in middle school, so I'm sure you've experienced a few. Many of our students have PTSD, and you cannot learn when your body is in fight-or-flight mode. Studies have shown that creating a caring, safe, and inclusive environment can improve a child's IQ as much as 20 points. Our federal government has no idea what our young people struggle with every day and what they need to succeed. Diversity is not just about skin color. Multiple intelligences, diverse learning styles, disabilities, different backgrounds and life experiences make us all diverse. And with brain-compatible programs that create environments that value and respect these differences, learning improves. Equity programs make sure that all students get the support and resources they need to be successful, which reduces stress, then learning improves. Inclusive environments where every student feels valued and supported, feels a sense of belonging, and is scientifically proven to boost self-esteem and confidence, and learning improves. So I hope you are on this board because you care more about people than politics. And if you are truly concerned about empowering all students to reach their potential, then you have to provide an environment where all of them feel safe and included. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diane Muscovac, Dr. Klobar, and then Mike Carslake.
School Chaplaincy. Reestablishing God in Public Education. For the first time in over 60 years, God is being welcomed back into public schools. With the passing of the Texas Chaplain Act, school chaplains are now playing a key role in restoring spiritual and emotional well-being in education. The National School Chaplains Association reports powerful outcomes from international data, including improved inter-student relationships, student motivation and goal-setting, respect for teachers and authority figures, teacher morale and retention, and overall school safety. It has decreased alcohol and drug use among students, teen pregnancies, disciplinary incidents, school violence, and student suicides. The crisis in public education is undeniable. Teacher resignations, classroom violence, student depression, anxiety, and suicide have reached unprecedented levels. Over 1 million felony assaults have been committed by students against teachers. 44.2% of students report persistent feelings of hopelessness. Here's what parents and teachers are saying about the impact of school chaplains, and these are quotes from different teachers and students. "School chaplains are a light in the lives of our children. Every school in America needs this program. Our school feels like a community again. There's definitely more peace. My son opened up for the first time in months thanks to our school chaplain. As a parent, I finally saw hope return when the chaplain stepped in. The school chaplain helped bring peace and guidance during a family crisis. The support given to grieving students was priceless. This program has brought emotional healing to so many of our kids. We feel safe knowing a chaplain is available for our children every day. Chaplains are not just spiritual guides; they are anchors of stability, compassion, and hope in the heart of our schools. Let's work together to change the hearts of people starting at a young age, as early as kindergarten. God's children deserve to feel safe in school. Let's make Virginia the next state to pass a chaplain bill." And as a side note, DEI is a man-made forum designed to elevate social status over merit. In God's eyes, all people are created equal, and qualifications and merit are what sets us apart. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Rick Klobuchar, then Mike Carslake, then Susan Berman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Rick Klobuchar. It is pronounced phonetically, Klobuchar. All right. I'm a PhD nuclear chemist, chief scientist, and former chief scientist for a billion-dollar-a-year, 3,000-person business unit. Now, one of the arguments that was put before you today was people who come up and talk against DEI, I've not given one argument against it and how it is affecting them. Well, I'm going to tell you about that. But first of all, let me tell you that I've had an opportunity to circulate around a petition, and I had previously circulated it. We had 70 signatures. We picked up an additional 63 signatures last night, and quite honestly, we could have picked up 1,000 against it. So, EpiYoung will be coming up after me will be presenting the signatures that we've gotten. So, the compromise on the petition that we have is recognize that DEI is dead, and it should be dead. You can argue for funding, you can argue for your programs, but remove any racially and gender-biased wording in your programs. You can do that in your policy, and especially in areas of hiring. I've heard, well, equity is only just to ensure equality and opportunity. Well, if that's the idea, to ensure equality and opportunity, use those words. Use those words. Use what you mean to say equity and equality are two different things, and they will always be, and they will always be that way. Now, I asked for an argument about DEI affecting me individually. One of the things I did as a chief scientist is I interviewed employees, and I interviewed a lot of students coming from this district here. We seek the best, most qualified personnel when we hire, not someone who claims that they have a right to get a job just because they graduated and passed the minimum levels for that. We're not about mediocrity. We're about excellence when we hire. And I might add, one of the last jobs I had as a chief scientist and engineer was to serve as the principal engineer for the Department of Education's migration to their new electronic systems. That was a $100 million contract that my company won. And I can tell you, I have never seen a place that has been so much mediocrity with it. Now, let me make one other point about how DEI has affected me, and this is a personal one. So last year, I applied to be a substitute teacher. I would submit that I'm pretty well-qualified with a PhD in chemistry, and I'm still very good in math and engineering, and I can tell you, I never heard back. Never heard back. And I was a substitute teacher. So, down with DEI, but please argue for your programs, get them funded. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Carslake, Susan Berman, and then Janet Burns.
Good evening, school board. Happy to see you here tonight. So far tonight, I'm kind of impressed with a major theme in the room. The theme is attack. Evidently, DEI is a great thing, according to a lot of people I've heard speak tonight, but most of them have spent most of their time attacking our school board members. By name. By saying they're terrible people. I'm a fan of DEI. See a lot of you with a little fan.
Mr. Carslake, could you direct your comments at the board? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Brown. So, I forgot to bring my fan tonight. But I'm just wondering, if DEI makes us such good-performing people and teachers and mentors, why do we need to attack people tonight? Why is that the theme tonight? DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. But I would suggest we might have a different theme. How about discipline? Why do we work at bringing discipline back in our schools? That's a word I haven't heard from anyone. How about exceptionalism? Now, I know a lot of you are happy with DEI because you've potentially been turned into exceptional students, I hope. And I've heard some good speakers, heard a lot of good speech. And for those of you who have benefited from a program here or there, that's great. I went to school, I was a top 10 percenter. I found out in school that top 10 percenters sat in the front of the class, they raised their hand, they got recognized by the teachers, and they probably did well. They probably graduated high in the class. And I know you have all those kinds of kids. But that's not all what DEI is about. A lot of DEI claims to put students first. Well, if the first students are brought into first place because of equity, because they're raised up, because someone doesn't want to fail them, but they haven't passed reading, as Mr. Callan pointed out last week, they didn't pass reading in the first grade, the second grade, the third grade, or the fourth grade, somehow they got to be tutored to the fifth grade, I'm not sure it's really working. If DEI is such a great idea now, what was our schools doing before the year 2000? Were we complete failures, or were we complete racists in our schools? Really? Before the year 2000? I don't think so. Because you were teachers back then.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Susan Berman, then Janet Burns, then Teresa Stanley.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Berman. I'm the mother of three, and I'm the PTA president of one of the largest elementary schools in Virginia Beach. For 20 years, I have worked in federal government advocacy, and for the last five, I've worked for an education organization. I'm here tonight because last week's framing of laws and executive orders was deeply concerning. And I'd like to reiterate to the board and explain to my fellow citizens and your constituents how education policy is determined. First and foremost, only Congress can make laws. That's why they're called the legislative branch. Presidential actions like the executive orders, the Dear Colleague letters, and the FAQ documents are not laws. They cannot overturn laws or Supreme Court precedents. Rather, they are bureaucratic tools that dictate how agencies function, but they can only be implemented if they do not violate existing laws nor violate congressional intent. I know that we're all concerned about funding, but the President, but Congress has the power of the purse, and they are exclusively responsible for federal government spending. The President can certainly make and does make a presidential budget request, but that's all it is: a request. As they say on the Hill, "The President proposes, and Congress disposes." Legally, the President cannot prevent agencies from spending funds appropriated by Congress, including what is allocated to the Department of Education. The Tenth Amendment of the Constitution and laws such as the Elementary and Secondary Education Act and the Every Student Succeeds Act give states and localities the power to establish educational standards and curricula, including what books are on library shelves and what programs are offered. The power of the Department of Education is intentionally limited. That means that this board, along with the Commonwealth of Virginia, has the authority to determine what our students learn. So I ask, do you really believe that we shouldn't give young people the opportunity to explore who they are? That we shouldn't acknowledge that people of color were negatively impacted by segregation, colonialism, slavery? Or that generational wealth was not denied to certain groups? If you continue to dismantle diversity, equity, and inclusion, you must admit why you are doing it. You aren't doing it to follow a law. There is no law. You aren't doing it because you have to. The courts are still deciding that. Please don't make a decision based on fear or misinformation or haste. I teach my children that we often learn the most from our mistakes. That's true for our country as well as this board. Tonight, my eight-year-old son Jonah asked me why I wouldn't be home to put him to bed tonight. I said that I am hoping that some important people make the right decision. The courts have issued an injunction. That is a pause. We can do the same.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janet Burns, Teresa Stanley, and then Kay Florey.
Good evening. My name is Janet Burns, and I live in District Four. My oldest graduated from Bayside High School. I currently have a child at Tallwood Global Studies Academy, and my youngest will be starting pre-K in the fall. I stand before you again today requesting that you pause the April 8th DEI resolution. While I have an idea that regardless of what is stated today, you have already made up your mind, but I will hold on to hope and urge you to consider how our children will be affected by the decision you render this evening. Over the past few school board meetings, I have heard countless people's opposition and support of DEI policy. Several of you have expressed your reasoning to move forward with adhering to President Trump's executive order due to funding, but what good is the funding if our children are academically supported equally? This policy provides every child, regardless of their race and gender, fairness and support within their academic studies. It doesn't provide advantages for some, but it ensures It doesn't provide advantages for some, but it ensures all students aren't overlooked. Pause the resolution for the child who needs extra support because of their disability. Pause the resolution for the child that needs additional assistance and their caretaker cannot afford a tutor. Pause the resolution for the child whose first language isn't English and is just trying to navigate within this country. Pause the resolution for the gifted child who has parents that has never received a higher education and is in need of resources so their child, so their child can move forward in life to become a productive citizen. Pause the resolution for the teachers so that they can receive training on cultural awareness and implicit bias to improve their teaching practices. Pause the resolution for the children who are bullied and feel silenced. Equity, inclusion are beneficial for all and it helps our schools operate better. Eliminating the policy leaves the less transparency and accountability on how Virginia Beach City Public Schools serves its students. Before you swore into your position, each one of you at some point has expressed to us the importance of upholding a high standard of support for our children, your commitment to serve them effectively, inclusion and upholding Virginia Beach City Public Schools' core values, which consist of putting students first, seeking growth, being open to change, do great work together, and value differences. These values are part of Virginia Beach City Public Schools' mission to empower students to become life learners and responsible citizens. Again, I ask you to vote yes and pause the resolution for the sake of our children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Stanley, Kay Florey, and then Suzanne Richmond.
Good evening, School Board. I'm Teresa Stanley. I attended Virginia Beach Public Schools and so have my children and grandchildren and upcoming great-grandchildren. I've been active, a community partner with the schools for decades through the Human Rights Commission and interfaith leadership work. I am here to urge you to pause suspension of DEI programs until the courts rule that that executive order must be enforced and leave Educational Equity Policy 5-4 in place. As has been stated by our superintendent, Virginia Beach Schools have always complied with the law. This executive order that states that no one group can be favored over another and there can be no unnecessary moral burden to any of our children may not get a rendering from the courts that it is legal. But even if it does, please explain how any of our current DEI programs violate this order, unless there is a clear definition from you about what we are cutting and why. I think that this is a premature way of operating by dismantling decades of expertise in implementing tried and tested programs and it's knee-jerk and perilous. Equity or access to the resources and support needed so that every student can reach their fullest educational potential has been integrated in Virginia Beach Schools for decades and has led to a school system that is heralded throughout our region. Many folks here come here, live here, and stay here, or even move here because of our schools. As school board members, many of you are familiar with and support the types of programs that meet students' needs where they are and address their needs to succeed to include mentoring, substance abuse recovery, and special education. I've partnered with some of you on the Season for Nonviolence, which engages the students and the full community through the arts to ensure that everyone feels like they belong and has access to mental health wellness, anti-bullying support, mediation skills, conflict resolution, and positive relationship building. In 2022, this board voted unanimously for an integrated equity policy. What has changed? I commend School Board Melinda Rogers for calling a town hall on the issue. It was a good first step, but I've left with more questions than answers. Many students have come before you eloquently telling you what they need and what it looks like, and that input is being ignored. Time is precious. It is a precious commodity these days. We often don't have enough of it, but tonight, you're getting another chance to be offered the time you need to vote on the side of integrity.
And that is time.
In the best interest of the 7,000 students.
Our next, that is time. Our next speaker is Clay Florey, Suzanne Richmond, and then Barry Nolan.
School Board Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board members, hi. I'm Kay Florey, a longtime citizen of Virginia Beach and co-chair of the Interfaith Alliance at the Beach, which is a diverse group of community advocates and faith leaders committed to justice, compassion, and the dignity of all people. We urge you to pause the suspension of programs and policies related to the DEI in the Virginia Beach City Public School System. I attended the meeting last week. Has anything changed with the status of the federal courts enacted preliminary injunctions against the executive order? You talked about vagueness and lack of clarity last week. Have you received more accuracy and certainty since then? Please vote to pause the suspension of these programs and policies. They are essential frameworks that ensure every child, regardless of background, ability, race, gender identity, religion, or family circumstance, is supported in reaching their fullest potential. I appreciate that these are difficult decisions. Be brave. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Richmond, Barry Nolan, and then Georgia Allen.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Richmond. I'm a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach and Mr. Culpepper, I live in your district. I had a speech written tonight, but I'm actually going to go off script because I saw something tonight that terrifies me. The look on your face when Mr. Spitzhup, even right now, this smirk, it's disgusting. It's really sick. You're a professional. And you know what? I'm a product of Virginia Beach Public Schools. I went for elementary school, middle school, and high school. I was bullied in Virginia Beach Middle School. I won't be bullied now and I will not stand by while you smirk. You can't even look me in the eye right now. I will not stand by and watch you smirk at a high school student who has enough courage to come up here and speak about right versus wrong. It disgusts me that you are on the board. The only people who have come up here tonight to speak out against DEI are white people and it doesn't surprise me that you would be a bully because that's what MAGA is. They're bullies. They're small men who need to feel powerful, so they're bullies. I saw on your candidate profile that you went to the Naval Academy. My mother was a first-generation American. Her grandfather fled Nazi Germany in the 1920s. My grandfather came to the United States in 1933. He was 10 years old. When he came here, his father forbade him from speaking German because he did not want people to know that they were German. 10 years old and he could not speak his native language. My grandfather went on to graduate from the Naval Academy in 1944. That was the year the midshipmen were graduated early so they could go fight. They didn't send him to Germany. They sent him to the Pacific. They sent him to Germany after the war so that, because he spoke German and he rebuilt the port of Bremen, where my mother was born. It disgusts me that you went to the same school as him. And now in the Naval Academy, there are two copies of Mein Kampf, but I know why the cage bird's sing has been taken out. You are everything I'm raising my children not to be. And you know what? I went to Normandy. I don't know if you know what that is, but where Americans stormed the beaches of France to fight for freedom. And I brought back a clicker. Americans would click once and then if you were an ally, you would click twice. My seven-year-old son was playing with it and I explained to him what it is. He clicked it and he said, mommy, I'm going to go into the room and I'm going to click this and I'm going to say, don't worry, everybody, I'm an American. Americans want freedom and you should be ashamed of yourself.
Our next speaker is Barry Nolan, Georgia Allen, and then Amparo Young. Barry Nolan. Georgia Allen.
I am Georgia F. Allen, lifetime resident of Virginia Beach and product of the Virginia Beach School System. I come before you this evening because I believe you need to vote to pause the DEIA resolution. We have heard from citizens claiming they don't want DEIA because they don't want indoctrination but merit. Well, I beg to differ. America is nothing but a propaganda indoctrination machine. You see, as children, we were provided with the worst books, the worst resources. Since you didn't want us to read or write, you monitored to see if we were doing better than your children. You then sent more propaganda requiring more from us with less resources. When we overperformed, you discounted our knowledge, you undermined our teachers, and you sent more propaganda requiring us to answer questions with your constructed lies. The miseducation with your initial lie placed in our books, Christopher Columbus discovered America, where people were already here. We were taught that the natives were savages, but your people didn't know how to grow crops on this land to provide their own food and ultimately to keep them from starving to death. Your ancestors ate their horses and when they had none left, guess what? They ate each other. Oh, yes, and Thanksgiving where the natives and settlers got together to celebrate another lie. Unfortunately for the natives, their kindness, which prevented invaders from starving to death, cost them their land. Your forefathers showed their appreciation by killing, stealing, raping, and destroying as many natives tribes as possible. Those they didn't kill, they pushed west. Your forefathers signed treaties that they never kept, no morals, no ethics, no integrity, and no merit. You earned absolutely nothing from merit but from terrorism and theft. You know all the inventions that the settlers' descendants are still profiting from today? None or very few of which their forefathers discovered. I went to school with little white children during integration. I learned that you have three lies and your children, and your children also cheated. The lie, the white lie, and the little white lie. Today, you have alternative facts. How many different lies can one culture have? My God. Your, your little girls wrote the answers on their thighs and the sons on their arms. They pulled up their skirts and pulled back their sleeves to cheat over theft. Yes, they stole tests too. Imagine a passage order around a cesspool of criminal activities. We believe in DI. Yes, we do. And we believe you should pause the resolution that you put out there because everything else has been pretty much a lie. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amparo Young, then Cindy Mosley, then Erin Speckah.
I oppose DEI and I am only concerned with the public schools in the city of Virginia Beach, the state of Virginia, as a voter, taxpayer, and a resident of this city. DEI teaches oppressed versus oppressor. Students are taught to divide people into oppressed, resistors, or oppressors, privileged or agents of domination. Privileged are the dominators, white males, heterosexuals, able-bodied, healthy, illiterate individuals, and so forth. Condemnation of whiteness, as in the book 2018, children, it is titled, "Not My Idea", teaches children that they can sign a contract with whiteness, which is represented by a collage image of the devil. White children get stolen land, stolen riches, special favors in return. Whiteness get mess endlessly with the lives of your friends, neighbors, loved ones, and all fellow human beings of color as well as your soul. Resistors must meet oppressors with resistance, dark-skinned females, transgressors, LGBTQ, disabled, illiterate, and so forth. William Clark, he's a son of a black mother, he was mixed, young man, in a charter school in Las Vegas refused to label and identify himself like this. He had to do a paper, but one of the things is the school failed him because he did, he felt that this was unconstitutional speech. They failed him because he did not write that paper. Again, he had one parent white, one parent black, and they wanted him to identify himself with those two things. Anyway, they threatened to also affect his graduation. His mother sued the school and won. Third grader in an elementary school in Cupertino, California, they had to read a passage from a book called Anti-Racist. It's about being a white, a woman of black color and that there are greater disadvantage than their social identities, who in subordinate cultures have little to no privilege and power. The facts otherwise, Harvard economist Shetty found that high school completion and college attendance rates are uniformly higher for black women than white men across the parental income distribution. Black women do better than their supposedly less disadvantaged counterparts, black men. Among black students in higher education, black women are more likely than men to earn degrees. 64 bachelor's degrees, 71.5% of them master's degrees, 65.0 have doctorates, medical, and dental degrees. They earn more money than white women, conditional on parental income. These are facts. Ronald Frye, economist, he also said that women, as far as, they have 12.7 more earning power than women on average. 68% have decreased incarceration since 2000, while white women have increased by 12%. Also, when it comes to equity, the University of California, California State University, they dropped their SAT and ACT administration requirements. One of the professors there, Freddie DeBar, had to write a paper and he wrote that.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cindy Mosley, Erin Speckah, and then Marie Dattino.
In the words of Maggie Kuhn, I'm going to speak my mind even if my voice shakes. And I'm not attacking anyone, I'm just stating my opinions and how I feel. Mr. Callen, I was bragging on you because of the way you, unlike some of the others, it looks like you actually listen to us. You're there. However, your prepared statement at the special meeting proved me wrong. Let me help you out. If you have a fifth grader who cannot read, you get them help. You said, I don't know what the answer is. Well, I believe the answer is early intervention. As a school board, if you would focus on programs which give students who need it an extra boost at the beginning and throughout their education, your outcomes would improve. And you could also, with the abundance of administration you have, help the teachers with the discipline. That should be their job, not the teachers. And that brings me to the recovery school. I'm sorry I didn't come and speak before it was voted on. Since there is such financial uncertainty now, the recovery school effort should be put on hold. We would be spending a lot of money on a school that may never serve a single Virginia Beach School student. Who's going to want to drive or ride a bus all the way to Great Bridge? The Chesterfield Recovery School, after being open three years, has 13 students. We can better serve our students and families struggling with addiction. And Chairwoman Brown, you probably read the meeting decorum rules at a previous meeting. May I ask that you also set some school board meeting decorum and professionalism rules for your board? Half of, half of the board sits there with their head down during the meeting and even you admit that you read emails during the meeting. This is very disrespectful to the speakers and your audience. And please tell your friend Ms. Manning that Robert's Rules of Orders are just a guide and that the code of Virginia is the law that governs public body meetings. If you're tired of listening to all this, all you have to do is vote tonight to pause the resolution. If not, the code of Virginia also covers agenda items. I sent an email to all of you last night and Ms. Brown, you did answer, but I don't agree with your answer. Sorry. If you don't mind, I'd like to read a part of the email because I believe your original vote on May 8th was unlawful and should be made null and void. Code section, two points, I'm not going to read that part. At least one copy of the proposed agenda and all agenda packets and unless exempt, all materials furnished to board members of a public body for meetings shall be made available for public inspection at the same time. You did not do that, so you shouldn't have been able to vote on it. So your vote on April 8th violated the law and I feel like it may need to be brought before a judge. So that's all.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Erin Speckah, then Marie Dattino, then Gary McCollum.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board, Dr. Robertson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the motion to amend the April 8th resolution that would pause further action while court. that would pause further action while court cases resolve and clear direction emerges. This issue matters enough to me that it got me off my retirement couch to come speak to you for the first time. I've lived in Virginia Beach since 1993. I've had three kids go through K through 12, all in this school system. They all had a great experience, and I want every student to have that same opportunity. I want to talk about the equity plan itself, which I think has largely been overlooked in the public debate. It was based on a 2021 assessment that collated a lot of data, but there was one piece that revealed something striking to me, is that one in five students said they don't feel their school is inclusive. That translates to five kids in a class of 25, 300 kids in a school of 1,500. That's a lot. And why it matters to me is because in my 33-year federal career, 19 of them as a supervisor, I have seen firsthand that people perform better when they feel safe and included. This is supported by research, by my lived experience, and by the district's own data from the same assessment, that the student groups with the highest levels of feeling included had the highest levels of performance. It's about performance. I've heard criticism of DEI, but I have yet to hear or see a specific complaint that reflects what's actually in the school's equity plan. There are no hiring quotas. There's no lowering of standards. There's no indoctrination. And regarding the contention that DEI hurts performance, the data shows that SOL scores have remained steady or gone up since 2021. Reading the history, you're steady. Writing is up by seven points. Math by two. Science by three. And Virginia Beach still outperforms the state average in every area. The equity plan identifies areas where performance is lagging and provides tools to detect and try to remove performance barriers. It doesn't give unfair advantages. It identifies and removes unfair disadvantages for everyone. Legally, the district has been in full compliance with federal and state law. Three courts have called the executive order vague and placed it under injunction. There is no immediate legal or financial risk. The DEI budget is point zero six percent of the total general fund for the schools. So it's not, right now, today, it's not about money or legality or practicality. It's become ideological. So I'd ask, is ideology reason enough to remove tools that our teachers can use to help students thrive? I can never fully understand what various groups of people have lived through, but I can listen and learn and advocate to ensure those stories are seen, heard, and valued, just like every student or school should be. Please pause this action until we get clear guidance, not vague threats. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marie Dattino, Gary McCollum, and then Andy Bond.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to express deep concern, not just over the call to pause the removal of DEI programs, but over the fact that we are even holding this emergency meeting to revisit a decision that was already debated, voted on, and finalized. This board made a clear democratic decision, six to three, to remove DEI programs based on Executive Order 14190. Now, instead of moving forward and focusing on what our students and teachers need most, we are all here again, spending more time, energy, and taxpayer money rehashing our settled matter. Let's be honest, this pause isn't about new information or urgent necessity. It's about relitigating a vote some people didn't like. Meanwhile, our schools still face real issues: learning loss, staffing shortages, discipline challenges, and budget pressures. We could be working on any of those tonight. Instead, we're here because a few members want to delay what was already decided. My great-granddaughter attends school in Virginia Beach. She started in September 2024. On October 6th, I was visiting her. She drew a picture of her family, excited. She showed it to me. She drew her brother, her sister, her mom, and herself. I asked, "Where is daddy, sweetheart?" She said, "Daddy is a dirty word, and I can't say it." I said, "Your daddy is standing right behind you, baby." She replied, "No, Gigi. He's gone. He's never coming back." Needless to say, I am very concerned about pausing or even taking a chance of making this permanent. Where is the reading, the writing, and the arithmetic? Every emergency meeting like this takes time away from classrooms, planning, and real progress. It sends a message to staff and parents that decisions don't matter unless everyone agrees, which undermines the credibility of the board. We hear proponents of DEI consistently speak of threats to our democracy, and here we are at the behest of the minority, when the majority has already ruled. This is a threat to our democracy. We owe it to our students, our educators, and our taxpayers to respect the process, honor the vote, and use our time wisely. Let's stop spinning our wheels and get back to work that truly matters. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gary McCollum, and then Andy Bond.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Gary McCollum. I live in District Nine, Church Point. Ms. Wiems, I think you represent that area, District Nine. I had prepared remarks, but you've heard everything I was going to say. So I would be remiss, though, being a licensed, ordained Baptist minister and having somebody impugn the credibility of Dr. King. I have to read this quote. "Why is equality so assiduously avoided? Why does white America delude itself? And how does it rationalize the evil it retains? The majority of white Americans consider themselves committed to justice for the Negro. They believe that the American society is essentially hospitable to fair play and to steady growth toward a middle-class utopia embodying racial harmony. But unfortunately, this is a fantasy of self-deception and comfortable vanity," Dr. Martin Luther King. So let me forego my remarks, and let me just tell you a little bit above me. I grew up in a housing project in Richmond, Virginia, a place called Wickham Court, 2375 Amber Street. And I always give the address because people wonder how a kid from that neighborhood could graduate from high school, dad could not read or write, mom had an eighth-grade education, graduate from college, attend college, graduate from high school, attend JMU, a predominantly white institution, get commissioned as an army officer, serve my country, go into the telecom business, and end up running a billion-dollar company. Why did that happen? Because of public schools. Public schools did that. Great teachers. Teachers who saw me for me. They saw me. They said, "This kid in the first grade should be not going to the second," so they skipped me to the third. I learned in leadership in the military and business that the most unequal thing you can do is to treat everybody equally. This policy, this change that you made, just whitewashing everything, thinking everybody is the same, that's the most unequal thing you can do. It's not going to help us. You've heard from the kids. You've heard from the parents. And somebody commented about body language. I learned a long time ago, the 55-37-8 rule. Fifty-five percent of what you communicate is how you look. Thirty-seven percent are the words, and eight percent is the tone. So what I'm trying to say is, you've heard what people want. Education is important, but we're training these students to be citizens of the world, not just citizens of Virginia Beach. We have to make sure that we are doing everything possible. I'm a former speaker at the African-American Summit. These African-American males need to see people like me succeeding. That program goes away and others like it, that's not going to help us. Let's go forward and not backwards. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Andy Bond.
Good evening, Mr. Hope Piper. I'm one of your constituents. I'd like to talk about some of the changes that you have proposed. First, and I think very important, in the first paragraph, paragraph A, it says, "toward achieving positive academic and social," and thank you for deleting the "and" social outcomes. And I'm grateful for your lack of dilution of academics, and that's my focus here tonight. I don't think, I don't think social outcomes and worrying about them outweighs successful academics. And in that vein, I'm very disappointed, but very glad that you did add the words, "preparing students to be future-ready, engaged, and productive citizens." I'm disappointed that you had to add that, that that wasn't there to begin with. Number three, again, the focus being on academics. It used to say, "The school board and the school division are committed to developing a capacity for cultural competence and commitment to equity and inclusion." And I think including those words, again, dilutes the academics that you should be focusing on. It's the academics that are going to bring everybody up, and treating them as individuals are going to give them the education they need to overcome all of the deficiencies that the system has put in place that they face, that no one doubts they exist. And then finally, paragraph B7, it used to say, and you deleted it, and thank you for this, "Equity gaps mean the disparity in a metric in achievement, opportunity, or treatment that can be reasonably correlated to racial or social inequity practice." A number of years ago, that was, it was pure numbers, and I'm glad you've deleted it. Seventy-two percent of the NBA players are black. Is that because they are, it's corrupt? Or is it because they're good at that game? Is it because they can be, that can be correlated to racial or social inequity? I don't think so. I think all the teams in the NBA want to win. So I'm glad you're deleting that, because those statistics that reasonably correlated can be abused in so many other ways. And I'd like to comment on, one of the teachers that spoke earlier talked about no longer valuing the uniqueness of students. And I would submit that the deletion of DEI causes teachers to value the uniqueness and not just them being members of a particular group. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, it is eight o'clock.
Okay, so we are in our agenda, going to go to our information. We will return for the remaining twelve or thirteen speakers that we have left after we have had our presentations here. We are going to start with our Policy Review Committee recommendations. Welcome, Kami Lanetti, School Board Attorney.
Good evenings, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Kami Lanetti, the School Board Attorney. And on behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'm going to be bringing recommendations from the April 23, 2025 School Board Meeting. The policy first that we will be looking at is 38. This is in your business section. This is small, women-owned, service-disabled veterans, minority-owned businesses, participation in school division procurement. And the only recommendation we are making to change in this one is to update the legal reference to a specific statute under the Procurement Code that actually deals with this matter. And that is our only recommendation from the PRC for policy 38. Are there any questions on policy 38? Any no questions on policy 38? I'm going to move on to policy 332, which is emergency, small sole-source purchases. There are a number of smaller changes in there. You've seen us working our way through the Procurement Code and the contracting policies the last couple months. And the changes we're making are minor changes, mostly involving changing the name of the department, minor changes for corrections on how we actually or process contracting or purchasing matters. You'll see it out there. And there are really no significant changes, other than correcting names and policy procedures on there. Are there any questions on policy 332, which is emergency, small sole-source purchases?
Mr. Cold Pepper?
Sorry, quick question. There are several places in here where you changed purchasing authority to requister. Does that mean that the requister has been submitting that document to a purchasing authority?
Correct. It's the individual that is following the process. There's, it may not be the purchasing authority, which might be the department or someone else is the actual person doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, go on. Here, no further questions on that. I will be moving on to policy 54. This is the educational equity policy that's now recommended. There are significant changes in this. The initial is the title, which would be educational opportunity and achievement would be the recommended change on there. There are significant changes in policy A, policy paragraph A on there. The recommendation is to remove the first sentence. The second sentence would then be adjusted to read, "The school believes that all students, staff, and committee members, regardless of backgrounds, diverse, and rigorous, respectful, and learning, and work environment where everyone contributes toward achieving positive academic outcomes and preparing students to be future-ready, engaged, and productive citizens." The second sentence would then read, "The school board and the school division are committed to developing an educational environment that fulfills its core values and lifelong learning competencies." And the recommendation would be to strike the rest of that paragraph. The recommendation then would be to remove Section B in its entirety. Then you would rename what we're doing in Section C due to school board commitments. It will be, "The school board commits to compliance with state and federal law regarding nondiscrimination as set forth in policy 57 and other policies and regulations. The school board also commits to providing educational work environments that provide students and staff with the opportunity to access educational services and work opportunities without discrimination or harassment. And the school board would then have the following commitments. One, supporting the superintendent in providing processes and practices that are nondiscriminatory in nature," and strike out the rest of that sentence. Two, respecting the life experiences of all community members to support the school division's core values and strategic goals. Three would read, "Adopting processes, practices, initiatives that inform students, staff, contractors, agents, families, and committee members of the school board's commitment to nondiscrimination and its expectation that disrespectful, harassing, bullying, and discriminatory conduct will not be tolerated. Such processes and practices and initiatives will also include how to report and seek resolution for discriminatory conduct," and then you would strike out the rest of that sentence. Four would read, "Identifying and acknowledging where lack of access and opportunity may exist in the school division and taking action to address those issues," striking out the rest of that sentence. We would strike out five, rename six, renumber six as five, and that would then read, "Requiring mandatory training for all school board members and staff regarding federal state laws, regarding anti-harassment and nondiscrimination," you would strike out the rest of that paragraph. We would then renumber seven to be six, which would be ensuring that educational and work environments provide students, staff, and the community with a wide variety of opportunities and experiences that support the school division's core values." We would strike out eight and nine. We would also strike out Section E. We would renumber F to C, which now would be curriculum and instruction. Curriculum instruction will not change significantly, but it will read, "As the superintendent or designated will ensure that curriculum and instruction materials reflect the school board's commitment to nondiscrimination." One would then read, "Curriculum and instruction materials for all grades shall reflect a range of perspectives and experiences," strike out the rest of that sentence. "All curriculum materials will be examined for bias by the Department of Teaching and Learning. Where materials reflect unlawful bias, teachers utilizing the materials will acknowledge and seek to understand the bias and communicate this important context to students and parents' guardians prior to instruction. Three, the school division will develop, support, and implement curriculum and instruction, as well as educational resources that have been reviewed, determined not to promote unlawful bias. Four, class instructional activities and extracurricular programs will be designed to provide opportunities for students to learn and explore a variety of points of view and experiences," strike out the rest of that paragraph. Five would now read, "Middle and high schools will offer opportunities for supplemental coursework with the summer bridge program. Study skills or tutoring during or after school to students interested in moving to higher-level courses. The information will be made available to students and families through school counselors, school bulletins, and webpages," and then strike out Section G. And we moved the related links, which links to policies and regulations that support this particular policy. At that time, those are the recommendations coming from the Policy Review Committee concerning policy 54. Are there any questions?
Ms. Rogers?
I have a few. First, so policy 5-4 was brought to us on September 9th of 2020, and there was only three abstentions, and there were eight people who said yes. The first abstention was Mrs. Manning, and she had said, "I abstain because I do not have enough information to make an informed vote for my constituents and stakeholders." Mrs. Hughes, who was on the board at the time, stated, "I am abstaining as well. While I'm in favor of an educational equity policy," many questions were not answered. And finally, Mrs. Wiems stated, "I'm abstaining, and I'll give my reasons. I do want an equity policy, but I think..." I do want an equity policy, but I think one's been done a little backwards. We have a lack of diverse community input, so I will abstain." So if everyone was in agreement in twenty-twenty that they did want an equity policy, I'm not exactly sure what's changed. Dr. Robertson, how long did it take to create this policy?
The original policy?
Yep.
I can actually speak to that. It was brought to us by Dr. Parrott. It came into the Policy Review Committee at that time. We spent a significant amount of time working through that particular policy. Then it went back and forth with Dr. Spence at that time. So it did take us several months to develop that policy.
Okay, and how many staff were involved?
I'm not sure if I know the amount of staff. I know there was a significant amount of staff members involved. That would have been through Dr. Spence and his staff. I know Policy Review received it, heard from many staff members. That was the area I was dealing with.
Did we have experts come in and weigh in on it?
I think our experts who came in to weigh in had to do when we developed the equity plan, not so much the policy itself.
Okay, and how long did it take for us to redline it? Like thirty hour, thirty minutes?
This version?
Yep.
I'm not sure it took thirty hours. It probably about an hour or two.
Yeah, like an hour. So like, we took about an hour to remove a bunch of work that took months on the heels of Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm going to move on, though. So part of the reason that we were doing this is because of Title VI. And I was looking at Title VI, and I noticed that the Office of Civil Rights provides technical assistance and policy guidance about Title VI. It says that the OCR, which is the Office of Civil Rights, is available to assist school and college communities to comply with Title VI obligations by providing technical assistance, including responding to telephone and email inquiries and presenting at trainings, conferences, and community meetings. To request technical assistance, you may contact the OCR regional offices that serve you in your geographic area by phone, email, or mail. Did you, Mrs. Lanetti, or anyone else on the PRC contact the Office of Civil Rights to assist in dismantling this policy?
No, my direction pursuant to the April eighth resolution was to bring it in compliance with the federal guidance, which was either the Dear Colleague Letter or the FAQs.
Perfect. The OCR also issued a notice in nineteen ninety-four that assists school communities in understanding their obligations under Title VI and discusses some considerations for schools when taking action to remediate a hostile environment under Title VI. The existence of a hostile environment based on race, color, or national origin that is created, encouraged, accepted, tolerated, or left uncorrected by a school can constitute discrimination and violation of Title VI. When a school is taking action to remediate a hostile environment, just as when taking any other action, Title VI prohibits the school from discriminating against students on the basis of race, color, or national origin. How does dismantling this policy align with the ensuring that our students will not be subject to a hostile environment, which is, which according to the Federal Department of Education, is illegal?
You are still required to have your anti-discrimination, non-discrimination policies in there. So policy five-seven, policy five-four-four, policy four-four, all remain in effect. And that is what the guidance currently is from the federal government, is that you must comply with those non-discrimination policies.
Okay, well, on the website for the federal, sorry, the Federal Department of Education, the OCR and the DOJ together published a Dear Colleague Letter that you just referenced that says, "School enrollment procedures," and there's a PDF that explains that, "Under federal law, state school districts, public schools are required to provide all children with equal access to public education at the elementary and secondary level." How does dismantling this policy ensure that we have policies in place that will protect all children with equal access to public education per the Federal Department of Education requirements?
I believe you, if you think that policy five-four is the only policy that ensures equal access, I think you need to look at some of your other policies. This is, you've always been required to provide equal access. This policy remains in effect. This policy came into twenty-twenty. It is not a required policy. It is simply a policy that the school division put in at the time to confirm values.
But it supports Title VI. It supports Title VI, this policy five-four?
It's one of the laws that supports us.
So I'm not understanding if we're trying to support Title VI and make sure we're in compliance with the law, why we're dismantling it. Again, is it because we're actually trying to follow state and federal law? Or is it because we just don't want it anymore? I'm not understanding.
Resolution directed me and the superintendent to draft or bring recommendations to take this policy to comply with the FAQs and federal guidance.
And why was the April eighth resolution drafted?
Because a school board member asked you to address it in concern.
Address what?
The federal guidance that was provided at that time.
Is that federal guidance now being suspended?
There are three preliminary injunctions. They, the courts say different things depending on which court you're looking at.
So is it now, are we being asked to suspend what we're doing until that has been settled?
I am complying with your resolution.
But that's not what I asked.
If you are not a party to the federal lawsuits, you are not subject to the preliminary injunction. So your choice in how you comply is a different issue. You are not.
I'm sorry, one minute. I cannot hear her if your things in my ear. I don't need to hear your opinion on this. I'm asking questions that I'm allowed to. I'm allowed to ask questions.
Ms. Dwyer and Ms. Rogers, Ms. Rogers, please continue your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, I'm sorry, what were you saying? I couldn't hear.
I believe where I left off is that the school division is not a party to any of those lawsuits, nor are you subject to the injunctions. The federal government is subject to the injunction to prohibit the federal government from imposing the terms of the FAQs, the Dear Colleague Letter, or Executive Order one-four-one-nine-zero until the courts have made a determination.
So on April eighth, when this came forward, I specifically stated that I was concerned about our level of liability for opening ourselves up to litigation if we were going to be writing resolutions that were going to be subject to change because they were not state and federal law. They were based on executive orders that were under litigation. I said those words, and I continue to say those words. Are we opening ourselves up to litigation from our staff? I'm sorry, from our students, our staff, and our families? If we make these changes, and then something happens, and we are not in compliance with what the courts decide then? Are we going to have to redo all of this?
I can't tell you what the courts are going to decide.
I didn't, no, but if, are we putting ourselves in a position where we're going to be liable? If there is an injunction, if all, whatever the executive order is, must be reversed? And we've seen that happen with this administration already. They have reversed executive orders. So should that happen, and we remove all this, are we putting ourselves in a position where we are opening ourselves up to liability?
I think it's too broad a question for me to answer, but what I think I can tell you is, as drafted, this doesn't necessarily say that you are going to violate any non-discrimination law.
But we're removing things. Why did we put that policy in place to begin with?
It came forward of the recommendation of your superintendent.
So he just decided this on his own? Was there not any state requirement?
This is not a state requirement, it's not a federal requirement to have this policy in place.
Perfect, okay. Then I have some more questions about the Code of Virginia. The Code of Virginia, section twenty-two point one dash two-five-three point thirteen-one says, "The General Assembly and the Board believe that the fundamental goal of the public schools and the Commonwealth must be to enable each student to develop the skills that are necessary for school and for success in school, preparation for life, and reaching their full potential. The General Assembly and the Board finds the quality of education is dependent upon the provision of appropriate working environment, benefits and salary necessary to ensure the availability of high-quality instructional personnel, the appropriate learning environment designed to promote student achievement and quality instruction that enables each student to become a productive and educated citizen of Virginia and the United States of America, and adequate commitment to other resources. In keeping with this goal, the General Assembly shall provide support of public education as set forth in the article of the Constitution." Are we still going to be able to provide our students with the learning environment that they need without the policies that protect them, like policy five-dash-four?
Policy five-dash-four is one of your policies. You still have all your non-discrimination policies in place.
But that's not, policy five-dash-four does a lot more than just non-discrimination.
I think you're going to have to ask your superintendent what programs you have discontinued as a result or will be discontinued as a result of this particular rewrite to policy five-four.
Okay, well, the Code of Virginia, section twenty-two point one dash two-five-three dash thirteen-one, it states, "Local school boards shall also implement the following: A plan to make achievements for students who are educationally at risk. A division-wide priority that shall include procedures for measuring the progress of such students." Did we not take away our equity dashboard that specifically measured our educationally-at-risk students?
The direction of your resolution was to look at the equity dashboard, the equity plan, the strategic plans, and bring it back to the school board.
So how are we then going to go ahead and, per the Code of Virginia, we are required to make a plan for achievements for students who are educationally at risk? That's what this plan does.
That's your next presentation.
Right, so, again, policy five-dash-four, the equity plan, all of those things are for this specific code. I want to make sure we're not opening ourselves up to liability.
You are not required by that code to have an equity plan. You have a strategic plan, which is your next presentation. So that's where you would probably want to be looking for a plan. Regardless, a majority of this board passed the resolution on April eighth with the direction to bring back recommendations.
I, I understand what happened. I was here. I'm just asking about our liability.
Ms. Rogers, we're going to move on to Dr. Green so that other board members have a chance.
Go ahead, Dr. Green, I yield.
Thank you. So, Ms. Lanetti, I'm going to be very quick and to the point, because if I'm not, I disappoint some people out there because they know how I speak. I, of course, was here for seventeen years, and we go all the way back. And I do remember Dr. Robertson, when we developed that policy, as well as some of the rest of you, and the intent, which I think is where our public is missing. So I say that to say, since we're doing a lot of quoting of Martin Luther King tonight, I'm going to share a quote, and it's going to be very strong, and I will provide later the reference, and I'll get to my question, Ms. Lanetti. There was, in his speech in nineteen sixty-four, when we were developing all these civil rights laws that I think are now being manipulated and misconstrued as to the original intent, one of the things that came out with Dr. King in being happy that we were moving forward with getting laws to address equity and equal opportunity, he stated that, "The law cannot make you like me, but the law can make sure you don't lynch me." Ooh. And in this case, for me, that policy kind of protects a lot of people. And my question is, Ms. Lanetti, and it may need, and Madam Chair, I know I cannot direct any questions to anyone on the dais, but what can we do to go back and look at where we can put some pieces back into that policy so that people do not feel that they are being disvalued, disrespected, not seen as a person of many groups that have often been marginalized, such as women, minority? I'm a senior citizen now. That policy says, "You don't see me," or "Anyone who does not look of a certain persuasion." That is what that policy says to me now, with all the edits. So what can we do, Ms. Lanetti, to broker, to take that back so people will feel valued and not exposed? And that we're going to be running rogue with everything in Virginia Beach when someone doesn't like how someone has their hair parted on the side? Or they come to school with mismatched socks that someone doesn't like? We need to take that policy back. That policy is vulnerable, and I'm just appalled that that would even make it out of a committee.
Your procedures are for a policy recommendation to go to the Policy Review Committee. That is where the Policy Review Committee should be working it out and bringing it up to you. And once it's here, it's yours. You can do what you want with it. This is your opportunity. That's why we bring in our information you do with all your policies. If you want to make a change, we make a change, and we bring it back. It is now in your lap. The direction of the resolution was to bring recommendations to PRC so it could come up to the school board that would be in compliance with federal law. Now it's in your lap. Now is your time to work with this policy.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay, fair enough. And so I'm going to formally request that this policy be brought back to the Policy Review Committee, and this is why. Mrs. Lanetti, our attorney, works for all eleven. And so she takes, she takes the heat pretty well standing there. In this key, in this case, however, this was the order of the heat per our attorney. Mrs. Brown did not want five-dash-four at all. She wanted that removed. Mrs. Weems came up to the school administration building and worked with Mrs. Lanetti to change this policy. This policy was brought forward to the Policy Review Committee completely redlined. In the history of the Policy Review Committee's committee, there has never been a policy brought forward that has been redlined to that degree, except for the short period of time that Mrs. Manning was chair, and she brought forward her own policies. Policies have always been worked on by the Policy Review Committee as a group. It just so happened that the day that that was brought forward, Mrs. Rogers videotaped that meeting. And the only person who really asked any questions or asked for changes was Mrs. Felton. And none of those changes were accepted, and they all, everything came forward. The way that it was created in Mrs. Lanetti's office. Mr. Bowen Steele did not ask any questions. It was all, it had the appearance of a done deal. And let's be honest, we have a six-to-five board, and that's what's going to happen. There'll be six people that are just going to box-check this, and we're going to move on. And five-four is going to be dismantled without the proper input. It really should go back, taking into consideration comments from other board members, and it should be reworked. And I'd like that, whatever you're writing right there, I'd like a copy of that on Mrs. Brown. And so this is, this was actually very improper. And there are past Policy Review Chairs who have watched this happen, who have read it, and have actually been really disappointed with the amount of redlining that occurred. And so, again, I respectfully request that this come back to Policy Review Committee for further review. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, thank you. I have, I have some general comments, but I also have some specific comments. First and foremost, I did email my comments to the Policy Review Committee. Looking through some of the things that I would also recommend and add on there, I think we do need a definition of key terms. There's some things on here that I think that we need to define for the audience that will be reading it to understand some of the language being utilized. But I think if any general citizen, like, picked up a document like this and saw the amount of redlining, the biggest, the first question we have is like, where does the word diversity go? And why is it crossed out? Where in this executive order that I've read and FAQs, which I've read, says that we cannot say the word diversity?
Are you asking?
I'm asking, yeah.
I believe the direction you were to look at certain words on there, but more specifically, your April eighth resolution told us to look at words like diversion or diversity and issues on there. What we were reading from the Dear Colleagues Letter, which I agree is not completely clear and in agreement with the FAQs, was that words like diversity, DI, other issues were potentially going to be issues that the federal government would be looking at. So when you told us to, in the resolution, to take the resolution terms and look at these policies and strategic plans, we tried to remove those things which we thought were going to be inconsistent with what the federal guidance. Terms and look at these policies and strategic plans, we tried to remove those things which we thought were going to be inconsistent with what the federal guidance was.
I don't see on the resolution where. We should take out the word diversity. But I, I think just reading that first sentence, I mean, I think that doesn't sit well to. I mean, majority of the folks that have shown up and spoke, the constituents in District Seven, I mean. The department, the Virginia Department of Educate, Board of Education has diversity within, you know, on their website. In the vision where it says, the vision of board education and superintendent of public instruction and cooperation with their partners is to create an excellent statewide system of public education. That rise strength from our diversity and so on. Um. And I think that these words matter. I think hearing from our speakers who've shown up to our community members. Words do matter and it's disheartening to see. Kind of what, you know, from a policy perspective, just someone doing a find and replace on this term diversity. Because I think, you know, in our school district, we have so many folks from different cultures, different backgrounds, different religions. Different countries and it's not about, you know. Putting people in different buckets and saying and, and whatnot and, and, and those things. It's more about like, how do we value and honor? All the experiences that show up to our front door. And to see just the complete gentrification of that word removed from policy, it just. It perplexes me. It really does perplex me that this word has gained so much native connotation to so many folks. You know, I've worked in scholarly research, worked in equity-based programs for fifteen some years. Um, working to build a better world. And nowhere in academic research do I see. Things come up that talk about equity, socialism, equity, equality of outcome. It's all about how do we give people the tools they need to succeed and thrive. And I, I just wonder how we've lost our way with how this term equity has become a banned word. Cause twenty years ago, it wasn't a banned word. In fact, let me read you some policy from twenty-two years ago. This subpart, this is from some uh ex- executive policy. This subpart may be cited as the Women's Educational Equity Act of two thousand one. And then it goes on to list findings about women's education. You know, talks about sexual harassment, talks about representation in class, classroom textbooks. Talking about how women do not take as many mathematics and science courses as we heard earlier about women and STEM. This concept of equity has been in education for twenty, thirty, forty some years. It's not a brand new concept. George Bush put it in No Child Left Behind, which, you know, we all, I have my own thoughts about that policy. But the fact that equity shows up in that policy shows that this is a nonpartisan thing. We all believe that kids should have uh the tools to succeed. And so to see this dismantling of this policy. I understand why the community is frustrated. I understand when we remove words, those words matter to people. You know, if you include just a sentence on a job description that says. We encourage applicant, applicants from all backgrounds, all diverse backgrounds to apply, you will see an increase of applicants from those backgrounds. That's backed by research. It's backed by that. And I think that these, this policy, do we need it to survive? No, we're not legally obligated, but we need it to thrive. Because what it does is it shows to our students that they matter, that their narratives matter. And so my challenge to the policy re- review committee is don't accept these red lines. I know that we're given guidance from. Uh, the executive order uh from FAQs, which I mean. The amount of vagueness in those policies, as judges said, is, concerns me. But I know that we've been given some direction and orders. But I think that this is a complete overstep of what is actually was said. Um, and I think that I really want to s- show that like, these things do matter to our kids, to our communities. To the folks that we represent, we hear it from the staff when they, or from our, our parents, from our citizens when they show up. And I encourage you just to listen to their stories. Um, and. You know, don't completely redline all this stuff. The word diversity is okay. The word inclusion is okay. And the word equity is okay. These are not new concepts. They're concepts that have shown up in education policy for decades. So it was disheartening. It was sad to see this amount. Of changes being made within the realm of what we heard like hours, when it took months to build. So. Those are some of my thoughts. I've also emailed some of my thoughts to the chair um as well. So that's all I have.
Please, Chair Weems?
Um, yes, I just wanted to clear up some. Fault statements that were made. Um, the policy committee has met several times. And we have always followed the same process. Um, we met January twenty-second, February nineteenth, March nineteenth, April twenty-third. The same process. Um, when a policy comes forward, our legal department, Mrs. Lynetti. Redlines it. Sometimes if she thinks the policy's fine, she doesn't touch it. It's given to the policy review committee. During the committee meeting, we discuss it. We can, that's when we can make changes. We can leave it as is. We can. Not do anything with it. We can add it. We can take away. But Ms., it starts with, with um, Mrs. Lynetti. Sometimes she asks different department heads for their input if it has something to do with those departments. It's the same process that we have followed since I've been chair for four meetings. I contacted the last two policy review chair. Under different leadership, under, under different um, school board chair. It's the exact same policy that was followed last year. It's the exact same policy that was followed the year before. So three different school board chairs, three different policy review committee chairs have followed the same policy. So um, I do take issue with people um, saying that this was not followed correctly. Because it was. Um, Ms. Lynetti had a task, a difficult task to do. And she was following the direction given to her. I did not come down here. So I did not come down here because I was on spring break. I had a conversation with Ms. Lynetti. The day before our policy review committee. So um, again, the process has been the same. Since we've had a policy review committee. Sometimes we decide to say, you know what? We've got too many questions on this policy. We've got the three of us who are on the policy review committee. Wanna bring somebody else in. And so we actually vote to bring it back. This time, this policy was voted three zero to bring forward into, in front of the school board. For different reasons, obviously. Um. Some may bring it forward because they just want the whole school board to, like Ms. Lynetti said, it's in our hands. Some are fine with it. Some may want changes. But during that committee meeting is when we discuss. We change, we agree, we disagree, we either ask for more information. Um, we ask it to come back and, and this um, committee, the three of us voted to bring this forward in front of the whole board. But I just again want to stress that the process has been followed. Every me- every PRC meeting that we've had this year and for the last two years that I know of. I didn't go back further than that. But I assume the po- the, the process has been followed all along. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
So, um, actually, the direction was given to the superintendent. The superintendent, if I'm not mistaken, did not want to touch this policy and I don't blame her. That's how Mrs. Lynetti got this policy. Now Mrs. Weems got to add. To this policy and why it was brought redlined to the, to the policy review committee. There are probably five people sitting up here tonight who would like to have this brought back to the policy review committee. And discussed again and brought forward. Um. This, this, this policy was. Brought forward because of the president's executive order. Uh, my question to Mrs. Lynetti or to the policy review committee honestly is. If the executive order is deemed unconstitutional, how do we undo all of this? Because we owe it to the public to undo something that was deemed unconstitutional. My fear is that the six people on this board will just vote to leave it as is. Even, even if the original reason for even being here was deemed unconstitutional. And that's my worry is for our public. Our public who has come many weeks in a row. And has given you their opinion and it's being largely ignored. At least they deserve the opportunity to have the policy review committee go back. And, 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 and really take a good look at this based on the comments that people have made. All of our districts have spoken. They have and, and they deserve to be heard. Um, and that, that's all I'm asking.
Ms. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Brown, and uh, thank you for this opportunity. As one of the official members of the uh. Policy review committee, um. I would like to say to my board members, I don't think that the community is asking or questioning the process. How many times the policy, the PRC, has met. Um, I feel passionate about this equity policy because. Um, five four, because when it was put forth, it was a big. Great thing for not only the school board before, but for the staff and the students. That knew that we were putting it in place and, and it passed. The five four to me has become this big shiny object. That um, the dear colleague letter has targeted. And from what my colleagues are saying, you know, when it's questioned, when the community come forth and has questions about it. I think it's, it's, it's up to us to decide that we take it back. When I got back to uh, the policy meeting after bed absent. For a couple of weeks. And when I saw this policy and how it was redlined. Some of my colleagues use that for a more political way of putting it, redline. I waited in the house and this has been totally gutted. And I did try to go through that policy and ask question, why was this removed? Why was this word removed? I do wanna take this time to thank my colleague, Mr. Mark uh Bornstil for saying. Let's table this and tell Ms. Felton, get back from her grievance and do it then. That wasn't even taken in consideration at all. But when I got back to see this policy, which had been. Put together so diligently for months, felt like a year, that we put this against strategically. Trying to include everyone, staff and student. Our, our entire organization. We were one, the only one of divisions in this area. And the seven five seven had put, had put that much effort and pour into a educational equity policy. And we got commended by other divisions. And what they did? They looked at our policy, cut and paste, and made their policy from ours because it was so strategically, strategically put together. It was a strategy. We worked on it. So if we as a board. And if we wanna follow due process. And if any, any moral compass reside in us, we should hear the public. And take it back and do some other work to it as well. I remember being on this board for the eight years I was on here. And some of our colleagues would look at how many people came to speak, how many emails we got. And they would use that percentage as to how they would make their decision whether it was worthy or not to go back. And do something to anything that we were doing. Well, we're not doing that now. We're not using that process. It is what it is. But if your moral compass reside in you anywhere, the public is asking you to go back, revisit. I mean, it is really, it was, it was so rare. I just said, well, you know, to sit here with you would not take, it wouldn't even take, it would take too much time for me to go through it. So let's take it to the board. Let's take it to the public now that it's this way and see what they say. And then we make another decision from that. But the, the public has spoken several nights and we are still here saying it's not going back. Like uh, Dr. Green said, if it's, we're not asking you to put back anything that you've taken down because you're not. But what we are asking you to use your moral compass for your students that, that has come before you, that I've spoken to. That they use this particular policy as a symbol of being safe. Invested, involved, being seen. Not, no, I'm making this up. It's from conversations I've had with them. Even in Dr. Robertson. Supervise, superintendent advisory board. Students from all over our division, when I met with them, and this was the main topic that they talked about. They said, now what? If you change this policy, Ms. Felton, they said, this five four policy, these are just students. If you change this policy, then what else? What else will you touch? What else will you move? I said, you know, for every change, there's another change. So I ask you. If your moral compass is there and you recognize your people and they're seeing what you're seeing, especially your students, who this will impact them more than anyone. Let us take this policy back and redo some of what we've done. You dismantled the very core of what your students believe in.
Please hold your applause during the information section of our meeting. Um, Mr. Cummings?
So I guess I'm trying to understand what exactly. Do we wanna go through, like you say, you're looking for feedback from school board members? Um. I think looking at this, I probably would need more information on why some of these things were thought to qualify to be. Not in compliance with the executive order. Um. But specifically, are you looking for us just to go through and comment on each individual line and provide our thoughts on what it should say, shouldn't say? What is, what's the best way of giving feedback?
This is your policy. You can decide what the wording is. Normally, there are suggestions as a substitute language. Mrs. Felton asked for a change, redmi- redline things to the PRC. That was the only request of the PRC to change. Uh, we un- we unredlined when she asked us to unredline. Normally, you would come back with a substitute or specific lines. I did see your comments, Mr. Cummings. That you presented and I was looking at some of them the other night. Those are um. Things that, there were more questions on them. Those were something that the whole board would look at or policy. But otherwise, normally you all would come back with. Other language. We've done that many times where you've offered language. We've suggested if we needed to think about it, went back to PRC. Normally you would come back with the recommendations and say, I like this recommendation. I don't like this recommendation. I want it rewritten in this way. That's normally what happens. But it's now with you, it's your policy. You can rewrite it the way you want it.
Okay. So I will be providing some of my written feedback to policy review committee before. When's the next time, point of information, when y'all meet next?
Twen- twenty-first.
Twenty-first, alright.
One o'clock, nine o'clock. I'm not sure I remember what time, two o'clock, sorry.
Alright, that's all.
So I've heard five of my colleagues weigh in. I'm moving this back to policy committee. Um, what I have not heard is a motion on that and, and so I just wanna. Throw that out there. That's why I haven't interrupted um, those thoughts. So um. If, if that's something that you want the boards to consider doing, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on a motion for that. So, uh, Ms. Melnick?
I'm sorry, I'm not in the queue.
You, you weren't in the queue, is that what you said?
I'm not in the queue to speak, but if you need me to make a motion .
Oh, I thought that you were in the queue. I'm sorry. Dr. Green?
I would like to make the motion. Is this the appropriate time?
I would like to make a motion that we take fi- that five, policy dash five dash four be returned to the Policy Review Committee for further revisions and that it comes off of the action agenda for May twenty-seventh.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Rogers. So we're gonna give um, Clark an opportunity to enter that in and um,
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I thought if there were enough people that really wanted it, that the Chair of the Policy Review Committee could just accept that and, and we can move on. I don't know that we need a full vote for that. We, it's always been kind of a courtesy that if that many people are asking for it, then it just goes back.
Do you want to speak to that, Ms. Weems?
Um, I mean, either way, we can vote or if the majority of the people want it to be sent back. But I mean, it's usually when the majority of the folks want, want it to be sent back. But I'll, I'll be willing to look, I will definitely be willing to look at it if the majority of the people want it sent back.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Um, I, we're gonna go ahead and vote on this because there are some of the, my colleagues on the board that no change would be acceptable no matter what. And so um, you know, this would go back to PRC over and over and over again. We've seen it before. Um, sometimes it's just belaboring the process. Um, many board members have brought substitute motions at school board meetings. Um, previously, that's still allowed, that's welcomed, that's occurred almost at every single meeting uh, that we've had this year. Um, so um, if anyone wants to speak to the motion to move it back to Policy Review Committee, Mr. Bornstein.
Um, what, some of my question is, ha- if we do vote to take it back to the Policy Committee, how is that going to affect our vote in action tonight on the? Well, would that affect it at all?
Ms. Lannetti, he's asking in reference to the uh, the resolution.
Oh, the last actual item on there. Um, right now, which resolution requires that we had to, the PRC needed to bring recommendations to the board, I believe, May seventeenth. So you've met that requirement for the policy. You brought the recommendations on there. The strategic plan you had, I think, to May thirty-first. So you had to bring, PRC needed to bring the recommendations to you and you've met that time period. So that's all the policy required, uh, the side of the resolution required.
So if we did bring it back, will we vote on that tonight?
The resolution? I don't know that, that affects the resolution. You are currently in compliance. You have bought, you have bought one round of recommendations. It didn't say you had to bring your final recommendation. It just said you had to bring recommendations on uh, to how to bring five-four into compliance. So you've met that portion of the resolution.
Okay. But I was just thinking, I mean, if, if we vote on it, the uh, the resolution and it doesn't go through, would there be any point in bringing that back to the Policy Review Committee? Is what I'm trying to.
If the resolution, if your revote on the resolution to pause, the resolution on is to pause the remaining implementation of the April eighth resolution. If that, if you pause it, then you wouldn't need to do anything further. If it doesn't go through, then the April eighth resolution remains in place. You have currently, as far as policy five-four, met the requirements for the resolution for five-four.
Any other speakers on the motion? Okay, so um, Dr. Green, would you please restate your motion before we vote?
Yes, the motion on the floor again is to return policy five dash four back to the Policy Review Committee for review of the current revisions and to take it off of the action agenda for May twenty-seventh.
Okay, and so um, the voting board is open on that motion.
So Madam Chair, we have five ayes and six nays, so that uh, motion did not pass.
Okay. Moving on, I'll go on to policy five-ten, which is admission requirements. There are no recommended changes to policy five-ten. Are there any questions about policy five-ten, admission requirements? Are there any questions on policy five-ten? I will look at the last policy, which is policy six-seventy-three, testing and assessment. And there are no recommended changes to policy seventy-three, testing and assessment. Are there any questions? Are there any questions, Madam Chair? That is the end of the recommendations in the Policy Review Committee for this month.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lannetti. And now we welcome Dr. Lisa Bannacki, Executive Director, Planning, Innovation and Accountability for the Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five and Twenty Thirty Strategic Framework.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, members of the school board and Dr. Robertson. This presentation outlines the actions taken in response to the school board resolution from April eighth, specific to our current and future strategic frameworks, Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five and Compass to Twenty Thirty. First, I want to share the specific steps we've already taken to comply with the resolution. These include removing visual and online references to Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five, including posters, the video and related website content. Access to Compass to Twenty Thirty was also removed while we reviewed both frameworks carefully against the guidance provided from the federal level and the resolution adopted by the school board. This slide provides an overview of the proposed modifications in direct response to the resolution. Our focus was on identifying language and components that could potentially conflict with the new federal guidance, particularly under Title Six. We approached this with the intention of maintaining the integrity of our work while aligning with compliance expectations. Because Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five will sunset in less than two months, the proposed revisions focus on minimizing risk rather than restructuring the full framework. In particular, we took care to align with the resolution's directive to suspend the division's equity plan. To provide context, the strategies from the division's equity plan were previously embedded into our framework, Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five. As a result, those strategies have been removed rather than revised in the updated version you'll see today. The following slides display side-by-side comparisons between the original version of the wording in the Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five framework and the proposed revisions revised version. Throughout the presentation, text highlighted in yellow represents text to be removed and text highlighted in green represents text to be added. For goal one, the proposed modification is to remove the equity emphasis and the equity strategies originally from the equity plan as indicated in the yellow highlight. For goal two, the proposed changes are to remove the equity emphasis and the equity strategies originally from the equity plan as indicated by the yellow highlight. For goal three, the proposed modification is to remove the equity emphasis and equity strategies from the equity plan as indicated by the text highlighted in yellow. For goal four, the proposed modification is to remove the word diversified from the goal title and statement, remove the equity emphasis and remove the equity strategies from the equity plan as indicated with the yellow highlights. For goal five, on mutually supportive partnerships, the proposed modification is to remove the equity emphasis, the reference to measuring equity with respect to partnerships and the two equity strategies from the equity plan as indicated by the yellow highlights. For the final goal area, organizational effectiveness and efficiency, the proposed revisions include removing the equity emphasis, the word equitably from strategy one, the three equity strategies from the equity plan and the reference to equity audits as indicated by the yellow highlights. Unlike Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five, Compass to Twenty Thirty is still in the early implementation stage. To guide this review, the federal documents and the resolution were translated into a set of guiding questions. And these questions were used to evaluate whether any goal, strategy or program within the framework implied race-based treatment, prioritize specific groups or use terminology specifically referenced in item four of the school board resolution such as equity, equity emphasis, diversified workforce or racial emphasis. These questions were applied across the Compass to Twenty Thirty framework. I will give you just a moment to review the questions. For goal one, the proposed modification is to eliminate the standalone label of equity emphasis but retain the substance by incorporating those items as strategies under goal one. These actions were always designed as system-level supports for all students and this reorganization reflects that. There are no recommended changes to the key navigational markers for goal one. For goal two, the proposed modifications include removing the label equity emphasis in accordance with the school board resolution. However, a key element that supports student connection and engagement is recommended to be retained as a strategy, specifically increasing access to mentors, extracurricular activities and leadership opportunities. These efforts reflect longstanding strategies to promote student belonging and success and they apply to all students regardless of race. In addition, the proposed modifications do not carry forward the portion of the original emphasis that referenced monitoring data and addressing disparities. While data remains essential to our overall improvement efforts, that specific language could be misinterpreted by some as implying race-based analysis or action. To ensure alignment with current guidance and the direction of the resolution, the proposal is to remove that phrasing. The final change was to replace the word diverse with the phrase a wide range in strategy three. There are no recommended changes to the key navigational markers for goal two. In revising the staffing goal, the proposed mo- proposed modifications include removing the word diverse from the phrase describing our workforce as well as the equity emphasis label and the specific language about aligning staff demographics with student demographics. While we value having a workforce that reflects the communities we serve, that particular phrasing could be misinterpreted as promoting race-based hiring priorities. At the same time, we preserved our commitment to supporting all learners by proposing a modification that adapted another element of the original equity emphasis and listed it as a strategy focused on ensuring staff have the skills needed to support a wide range of learners. This change maintains the original intent while reducing the risk for misinterpretation. There are no recommended changes to the key navigational markers for goal three. For goal four, the proposed modifications are to remove the label equity emphasis in keeping with the resolution but preserve the underlying actions and strategies because supporting student needs, improving access and removing barriers are core to our mission regardless of terminology. The word diverse was again replaced with the phrase a wide range in strategy five when referencing partnerships. This information for goal four did not fit on a single slide. This slide illustrates that there are no recommended changes to the key navigational markers for this goal area. The proposed recommendations to goal five are to remove the word equitable from the goal statement as well as the standalone label of equity emphasis but retain the substance of the item and incorporate it as a strategy with one-word change. The recommendation is to replace the word equitable with the word effective. This change preserves the intent of the original statement, which was about ensuring consistency, fairness and clarity in how resources are used while reducing the risk that the term equitable could be misinterpreted as referencing race-based practices. Our goal remains to support all schools through clear, well-managed processes that serve students and staff effectively. There are no recommended changes to the key navigational markers for goal five. The final recommendation is the removal of the division's, division, division's definition of equity from the key term section of the document as the word equity would no longer appear in the framework. As we prepare for what comes next, there are two quick key steps I would like to highlight for the board. First, we will return to the May twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five school board meeting where we will ask the board to take formal action on the proposed changes. The action will come in two parts. Part one is the adoption of revisions to our current strategic framework, Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five. Part two is the adoption of revisions to our future strategic framework, Compass to Twenty Thirty. Once both sets of changes are approved, we will post the updated frameworks publicly on vbschools.com by the end of that week, no later than May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. In responding to the resolution, we have approached this work with thoughtfulness and care, seeking to honor the direction provided by the school board through the adopted resolution while maintaining our core commitment to ensuring that all students have access to the resources and opportunities they need to succeed. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Ms. Rogers.
First, thank you so much for coming up here and for presenting this. I know this is difficult and I appreciate all the work that you and your staff have done to try and do what has been asked while still respecting that every student needs to feel like that they are part of this school community. My question is, and I just want to clarify, within this document, what you have highlighted in yellow is now in the document in the green part? Is that what I'm seeing?
For Compass to Twenty Thirty, for the most part, most everything could be incorporated and was then in green.
So we're keeping pretty much everything except for we're changing the word ac- uh, diversity into?
Diverse became a wide range in two places.
Uh-huh.
And the only other changes where you wouldn't see something translated would be a place that made reference to um, having a workforce that mirrors our student demographics.
So what is that going to be?
It wasn't translated at all.
So we?
It didn't become, it didn't translate over to Compass to Twenty Thirty.
So we don't?
At the risk of it sounding as though we would work to force?
No, but having, I, I understand what you're saying. I am concerned that we are then not trying to have a workforce. A divi- to me, a diversified workforce is a hearing impaired student having a teacher that speaks sign language so that they can access the education. That's diversified workforce. I, I, I'm concerned that we need to continue those type of practices now. And we need our public to understand we're continuing those type of practices so that our students can access the education that they need. Like again, we have English language learner students who need a teacher that is certified in English language learning, like.
If it helps, there's still the strategy that talks about ensuring staff have the skills necessary to meet a wide range of learners' needs.
Okay, that, that helps me. Thank you. Um, and so other than?
That and the item that talked about monitoring a variety of data and cer- and um, talks about disparities, monitoring for disparities.
So we're still required to do that though by the state?
Still gonna do it.
We have to because the state requires us to.
Yes.
Okay.
We're still gonna monitor student data.
Alright, okay. I, I'm frankly, I'm embarrassed that we have to do this, but I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick.
I too. Dr. Bannacki, make Bannacki want to thank you. Um, you did what you were told to do. And Mrs. Rogers is right, it is embarrassing. And I hope that this, the majority of this board goes back and reads and really looks at this document and, and really thinks about what it says and not that, oh, it's just not gonna matter. It's fine. Read what it says. It's very specific. I, I'm going through each one and I'm horrified that we're taking out provide a variety of personalized professional learning opportunities to all staff to support their professional growth and improvementation of the strategies encompassed. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm shocked. Equitable access that supports students' future aspirations? So to me, what this says to me actually is we're just gonna get rid of everything. I mean, the future aspirations, does that mean that we should really be looking at doing away with technical education? Support for students interested in enrolling in advanced coursework and programs? Maybe Mr. Callen was right. Maybe we should go back to whole language. Teach to the middle. Everybody does the same, because that's exactly what this is telling. We're taking out author supplementary and extended learning experiences at the secondary level to address disparities in advanced coursework participation? Meaning, we're gonna seek out kids that, that we know can probably do the work that, the higher level coursework that they may not find on their own? But as educators, we might help guide them to that? And they find success in areas that they didn't think that they could find? This is embarrassing. What are we doing? What we're doing is we reacted to an executive order so quickly, so swiftly, and we are making such sweeping changes that are gonna stick. And this board is going to be stuck with the changes that you made. You're gonna be stuck. Nobody is looking at these the way they're supposed to. I'm just gonna vote on it so it passes, so then it just sticks. Because this is so embarrassing, and I'll go out to my community and make sure they understand what this means and who brought this forward. Nobody is thinking. And I ask that you stop. I can see everybody reading now, but for grief, should have been prepared for this. This is so embarrassing.
Ms. Felton?
Ms. Baneky, thank you so much. You've been a, a force that I've worked with throughout the years, and you've been spouting about a lot of things that you do. Appreciate you, and you would do, you done, you, you did what you were told to do. We're gonna repeat that. You did what you were told to do. But I questioned in, in the Compass to 2030, in the original, that's Goal Four, down at number five, you highlighted diverse. And I questioned that word because our diverse partnerships that we have and that I talk to and relate to, they really appreciate that we have used that word diverse. And I take that back to our Entrepreneur Business Academy, putting that open up, how all the groups came in, diversified. We only had a slot for so many partners to partner with that. We had so many to come, over 300. We had to turn them away and do it on a cycle. But it was a wording that we used that spoke to them, that brought them out. So I'm wondering, the language that we're using now? Wide range? Is it measured? Would it have the same impact? Or would we have to work or deal with our, our partnerships now? They're gonna question what we have done. We've been unique in a lot of things that we've done, how we stand out. And we were the bright beacon on the hill. Now we have, now we are minimized. We have marginalized our work, and I am. I'm a little bit embarrassed. Now I gotta go out and explain this, what we are doing. By changing diverse to wide range? I'm not one of the students that asked me, when you changed the, the equity name to the equity policy to opportunity and achievement. He said, what does that mean? Thank you.
So I don't have a button, but I just had one quick question right now. Can you refresh my memory on when we voted on this? Because there was something I was looking for in the initial packet, and I have to go back in our minutes.
When did you vote on what?
The original Compass to 2030.
I think it was like November 26.
Okay, thank you. All right, and we will go through speakers that have not had the chance to speak first, and I believe that's Dr. Green.
Thank you. Ms. Baneky, thank you. I know what a driver and a force you have always been behind, all of our strategic plans, so thank you. And this may not be a question you can answer, so that's okay, but yeah, I'm giving you the heads up.
Okay.
Yes, and it may not be one Dr. Robertson is prepared for either. Now, you have your anticipatory say.
I'm excited now.
What, many years ago, before Dr. Robertson, remember when we had the icon for being ahead of the curve? And then we became a compass, because we were ensuring that all students would have an opportunity to go in whatever direction they needed to go in, with keeping in mind being respectful. So, when are we gonna get the new icon for whatever we're gonna be called? And I'm listening, I'm channeling my mother right now, like, don't say what you really think the icon is gonna become. I'm gonna let that just sit there right now. So, when are we changing the icon?
Are you asking me a question?
Yes, I am.
Okay, because Dr. Rob-, what are you shaking your head no at?
Because Dr. Robertson knows me well enough to know what I want to say.
I'm gonna pretend it's a real question.
And he is sitting on his hands hoping I'm not gonna say it. I'm not Dr. Robertson.
I'm gonna pretend it's a real question. We had this discussion when we started this framework. There was the question of, we're gonna keep calling it Compass. And it was so well-branded, and people know what it is in our schools.
I disagree with that now. This does not represent the work and intent of what it is. Trust me, if we're gonna keep this, you need a new icon.
Okay. I walked into it, I could tell. I should have, he was shaking his head no, and I went for it. Never mind. Next.
Mr. Cummings, have you had the chance to speak on the strategic framework yet?
Uh, not on the framework.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, I also know that you're tasked with a very difficult ask, especially trying to make decisions on a policy that's been labeled vague by judges. And I keep coming back to that for a specific reason, is that we are making institutional changes on something that did not have clear definitions, that did not have clear concepts, that was merely just a whimsical thought. And to see it change the ship so drastically. I mean, it's, and I, there's not a good way for me to say this, like, replacing diversity with a wide range. I mean, that's just academically laughable. I just, I don't have a, a strong rec-, I have such, it's such a bizarre concept to me that, you know, it, it just feels, feels like yes-speak. And I know you're tasked with a difficult ask, and I think this new a wide range of is just, it is embarrassing, especially if you care about, well, I'm not gonna say that, because, but I think it's embarrassing in the sense that for people who've been in education, we understand that educational equity is part of our mission. We understand supporting the diverse needs of our students is part of our mission. And regardless if it says a wide range, or if we take the word equity and replace it with effective, I know that our folks are gonna show up every single day to work hard for our kids, to support their needs, to build inclusive environments, and to ensure that every single kid gets across the table, or gets across the finish line. Because I know that that's driven into the heart of education, and that education is a factor of liberation. It's a factor of empowerment, and it's a power of self-determination. So, you know, I do applaud our educators that are going to continue to show up, because I know that you're gonna support our students, and I know that you are going to bring the pedagogy that you are trained on, which is equity, which is support for diversity, and I know that you're gonna bring that and continue to work hard to ensure that all of our students are successful. But this whole Command F, find, replace, I mean, there's just not literature built on some of these things, and I think that's really... I guess that's why I have such a hard time swallowing this concept of, that we take in terms, ideas that have been well-established in research, and just kind of, for lack of a better term, just, I mean, just change it on the whim of a poorly-written executive order. And I think we do owe it to our public, to our citizens, who in this last election, by large, elected Ms. Felton over here, to, who stood on the grounds of diversity, equity, and inclusion, to take that back and to think deeper about some of these names within the policies and within, you know, the terms, because the citizens of Virginia Beach clearly, at large, did not indicate they were supportive of these drastic changes.
Ms. Rogers?
Sorry, coming back for another question. In the Compass to 2030 key terms, that's Slide 18, says remove the division's definition of equity from the key terms. Here's my agita. The definition of equity is ensuring that all individuals have access to the resources and opportunities they need to succeed, recognizing that individuals may require varying levels of support. We still need that. How do we include those things if we are eliminating that from our key term, even though that is absolutely key to what we're doing here as we're educating all students? I feel like that we're word policing for some delicate people who can't handle the term equity, but through this definition, we must have that in our schools. So how do we fix this?
Are you gonna, is that a question?
Sorry.
No, it's fine. Okay. We're still gonna do it. It, it's not gonna be in the key terms, because the only thing that's in the key terms, the, the word has to appear in the document. If it doesn't appear in the document, what you lose in this conversation is just clarity. What that means is that you have a bigger burden of communication.
So we are being less transparent to our stakeholders by removing this. And, and, and not your fault, I know that it's not your fault.
We're still gonna do this.
I understand we're going to do it, but we're just being less transparent about it, which is not what I signed up to do. I don't know about anybody else on here, but I signed up for transparency for my constituents. And I absolutely, as do you, because I'm an educator, you're an educator. We know our students need to have access to the resources and opportunities they need to succeed. We have to recognize that they require varying levels of support. That is a foundation of education. And again, I ask my colleagues why we need to word police for our delicate ears. This is, I don't understand. I truly don't. I'm an educator. I understand education. If you are confused as to what we're doing in this division, please. Dr. Robertson is a seasoned professional. Every single person up here is a seasoned professional in education. Please ask them.
Ms. Melnick?
So in theory, Dr. Baneky, we're going to do this. I often talk about theory and reality. I usually talk about it the other way, but in theory, we're going to do this. But reality is going to keep us from doing this with fidelity. That's the truth. I do believe that the vote on the, I, I, I was hoping somebody was looking it up quickly, since it was asked. I know for sure Mr. Callen voted against it. I was surprised, because he was on the committee with Mrs. Anderson. It may have been 10 to 1. Could anybody find that quickly? Because that tells me...
Ms. Melnick, are you asking for the vote on the Compass to 2030? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. Mr. K-, I remember Mr. Callen voting against it. And again, I was surprised, because he was on the committee. But if it was 10 to 1, that tells me that nobody read it back then, but everybody's super eager to read it now, that we have to go through and take out words. And, and, and I'm gonna hold this division to this new language. And we're not gonna, if, we're not going to go back and interpret after the fact and say, well, it doesn't really mean that. It means everything it's saying in its cut version right now. This is not black and white, which is what people have made D E I, a black person and a white person ish. This is now everybody. This is special education. This is English learners. This is everything now. And this is what everybody has asked for. This is what the majority of the board has asked for, and this is what I'm gonna hold you all to.
Ms. Lynetti, do you have that vote? Mr. Culpepper, did you still want to speak? I believe the vote on that was 6-5.
Is that what it was?
Ms. Lynetti is working on confirming at this time.
Sorry, the motion passed 7 to 4. Do you want me to re-vote for it? I have the, there were four nays, and those were Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Manning, and it appears that Ms. Melnick, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Dr. Green, Ms. Owens, Mr. Riggs, and Ms. Williams voted in favor of the Compass 2030 strategic framework.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Baneky, I have a couple of questions, and I, I guess really more comments. I do appreciate all of your hard work. I see in the yellow here that most of these things have still worked their way in, and that you've added some clarity to the definitions. I have the initial framework up here, and I know that you included the slide on definitions for key terms in the Compass 2030. And I, I only bring that up because what is still defined is not in this slideshow. There was no other definitions removed, correct?
Right, that's the only one.
Okay, so academic and clear planning process, comprehensive wraparound services, differentiated instruction, digital literacy, evidence-based instruction, financial literacy, future-ready profile, government finances, Officers Association, inclusive learning environment, inclusive teaching practices, integrated systems of support, K through 12 continuum of acc-, advanced academics, media literacy, non-exempt employees, sense of belonging, social emotional skills, sustainable practices, well-being, and works of substance. Those are all still in Compass to 2030, correct? Okay. I just, I just wanted to confirm, because, you know, when we have a snapshot, I think sometimes that's confusing to the community. It's not, it's not your fault. I mean, I'm not blaming you, just for the record there. I do generally, I, I like what you did with Compass to 2030 overall. There's a couple of things I have some hiccups about, but they're not major. I'm not going to belabor Compass to 2025, because there's only going to be two weeks of school left. So I'm, I'm not in love with the 2025, but I, I'm assuming that you probably spent most of your efforts on the Compass to 2030. Is that also correct?
Yes, because by this point, we've already, we started planning for 2030 in December.
Right.
January, February, you know what I mean, like, so, and there's only gonna be, by the time you're taking a vote on it, two weeks left.
Right, okay. I, I just wanted to confirm, because I noticed that a, a lot of it didn't trickle over into the 2025, and I assumed that that was why, but I did, I wanted to confirm.
Because it's the equity plan. All of those strategies are the equity plan, and the equity plan was paused, so there was no translating it over.
I see, and the equity plan was due to expire in June, correct?
Right.
Yes. Dr. Robertson?
Yeah, so, you know, a lot, a lot's been said tonight, so I think it's important that as a superintendent of the school division, I talk about our strategic framework, particularly the strategic framework that we're building out that starts July 1, that's Compass 2030. So let me start with a bit of a history lesson. Up in, up through Compass to 2020, we never had equity emphasis as part of a strategic framework. We didn't have it in Compass of 2015. It came about in Compass of 2020, because the Ad Hoc Steering Committee we had at the time felt like It came about in compass of twenty twenty because the ad hoc steering committee we had at the time felt like. There was an absolute need to have an equity emphases in the goals embedded into the goals of the plan because of some things that. That had occurred in Virginia Beach at the time and we were high performing at the time. Um, but they felt like there was a group of students missing, they needed, we needed an equity emphasis so that we put that in the plan. We carried that whole concept over into the development of compass of twenty twenty-five and the in compass twenty thirty with the equity emphases. Because it had served us well. It has signaled to the entire community that we had an equity emphases. So when it, in in addressing the resolution, if you take close look at this language. You can see that the equity emphases in most cases has been rewritten as a strategy. So if you look at what the strategies were and what the strategies are, you will see the equity emphases gone. But the targeted action within the equity emphases is now a strategy. One of the things that has separated Virginia Beach City Public Schools is that every student who walks through our our hallways feels like they have a sense of belonging. We reach out to those students, we tap them on the shoulder, we've increased access and advanced coursework and our AP scores have gone up. We have more kids involved in clubs and activities and our discipline data has gone down. Our academic measures are up. I mean, you know, we we hear speakers, uh, sometimes a little frustrating because they haven't done their homework, indicating that our achievement is down. It is not, thankfully, we had a few speakers tonight who reiterated the fact that it is not even close. To what Virginia Beach City Public School students do every year in terms of academics in the rest of the state, not even close. The divisions we used to aspire to beat, we now beat. They're now looking to us. They're now hiring our people. We just lost another person you're gonna hear about to go to another school division and we just had the eighth. Former Virginia Beach employee appointed the superintendent of Williamsburg James City County. We are the trendsetters in this state and it's because of the work we've done. And what we've chosen to do here is recognize and we use a coaching analogy. I coached for a long time, sometimes the rules changed. When I faced a rule change as a coach, I made the decision, how can I take advantage of this rule change? To make my team better, my kids more competitive. I had other coaches who railed against the fact that the rules had changed. Well, the rules changed. Fact of the matter is, uh, we were tasked with taking a a look at at uh some areas based on resolution, we've done that. And we've done that in a really thoughtful manner. Because the hallmarks of what has made us special as a school division will not change. They will not change. Because we will, if they do change, you will see. Ramifications in terms of student outcomes, student performance, we're not gonna let that happen. All right, and I believe that the work that Doc- Dr. Baniki did with a number of principals, a number of senior leadership staff, including conversations with the attorney. Myself and Ms. Woodhouse represents that we're gonna continue to do great work here. We just need people to be cautious, great. To be questioning, outstanding. But give us a chance to demonstrate that that we have this under control. And only time will tell. How these changes that we believe are gonna continue to keep us at the forefront uh are implemented. And so I'll just leave it at that.
Ms. Melnick?
So then my question is for Dr. Robertson. Sir, are you saying that we're basically doing the exact same thing? With language that will comply with an executive order that we're really not changing anything? Um, I mean, you're saying that we have shown growth, even though people are saying, you know, it's the dumbing down of America. The dumbing down of our students, we've heard some pretty disparaging things about our students. That the rules haven't changed, just the language has changed and that we're s. I won't ask again, just, I just, I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so what I'm saying, Ms. Mel, there are certain fundamentals that have placed Virginia Beach in the position that we're in. And what we have done in looking through our practices is to ensure that we're not giving out any mixed signals to any particular students. That they are not included in any of the activities that we provide. That we, we use data like no one else and and if you walked into a school right now and talked to a principal and said, who are your kids? That are struggling right now, we're a little concerned about for the upcoming math SOL. They can tell you by grade and by name who those kids are and they can tell you all the things we're doing for those kids. That's not going to change. We we wanna make.
I know that to be true, sir, I know that to be true, I know that that is what our teachers do. As if you're saying we're tiptoeing around to help some narrow-minded people understand what it is that we really do. Then I'm fine, but good gravy, it does not appear that way and for somebody who doesn't follow us. Or is gonna come across these documents on their own. It's just not gonna look good, it's it's very, very scary. But I know our people do good things and I know our people have been put in a very, very unfair position. And I have no doubt that we will have some of our top, our top performing uh teachers, administrators. Uh, senior staff exiting, exiting our school division because other people are ready to snatch them up, to pay them more. And to take their knowledge and to learn with it because everybody wants to be Virginia Beach. We are successful for a reason.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we are now going to move on to the Division Literacy Plan. We welcome Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning.
Good evening Chair Brown, Vice Chair Williams, School Board, Dr. Robertson. My name is Lorena Kelly, I'm the Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. And I am joined by a team of colleagues tonight to share with you the updated K eight Division Literacy Plan. A requirement of the Virginia Literacy Act or the VLA. We would like to begin by thanking all of you for your review and support of the original submission. That we made in May of last year, as well as the updated submission that we were required to make in December. Both of our submissions have been approved and our DLP has been posted on our site. We would like to review a few of the recent updates shared by the Virginia Department of Ed. We are submitting a K eight Division Literacy Plan. As you know, that was the original plan. The Virginia Department of Ed directed divisions last year to create a K five plan. And then to expand to a K eight plan for the upcoming school year. As you know, the vows has been administered in grades K through three. And now a four eight vows will be administered to some four eight students. Students who are identified in a high risk will be required to receive intervention and a student reading plan will be developed to support this progress. We are awaiting specifics related to this process from the Virginia Department of Ed. In addition to the K five core and the K three supplemental and intervention materials that were on the previous plan. This plan includes information regarding the supplemental and intervention resources utilized by Virginia Beach for four eight as well. An updated list of approved resources will be released again in October. And we may update the plan and revisit School Board with an amendment to this plan if any of the new resources are determined to be a strong addition to our current support structure. We're pleased to share this proposal tonight with with you tonight. You have had, you have a complete copy in your School Board materials. We did want to share that this is a reflection of many stakeholders. We formed a Virginia Literacy Act Leadership Committee, which consisted of teachers, specialists, principals, gifted ESL and special education staff. In order to bring a variety of stakeholders together to provide input on what would be necessary to pu- support the smooth implementation. Of the various changes our teachers and experience and administrators experienced in elementary and will be experiencing next year in middle school. The committee provided direct input and several rounds of feedback. Please note that the the plan template does not include specific information that you might see in a comprehensive plan. What you see in the plan is included per the directions of the Virginia Department of Ed. They provide the template and divisions fill in the fields and do not order, uh, do not alter the format. The Division Literacy Plan template includes six sections displayed here and I will summarize each of them for you in a moment. I will pause so you can take a look at the six components. Sections two through six have been updated to include four eight information. The first section of the Literacy Plan template focuses on planning for comprehensive communication and requires divisions to describe the Division Literacy vision. The vision statement displayed here was developed by our VBCPS, Virginia's Literacy Act Committee and with input from various stakeholders. As part of our vision statement, we articulate that we are committed to providing students with high-quality literacy instruction grounded in science-based reading research. In partnership with parents to ensure that every student who walks into our Virginia Beach City Schools. Will receive the instruction necessary to become proficient readers, ready to pursue rigorous pathways and be successful in life. Section two of the Virginia Department of Education template requires divisions to list the high-quality instructional materials or HQIMs. Selected from the Virginia Board of Education approved curriculum lists. In addition to the HQIM materials you reviewed last year, we have added the supplemental and intervention resources that will be utilized for our four eight students. Section three describes professional learning requirements. As you are aware, with the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act this school year, professional learning requirements were shared. And we have worked with school administrators and specialists to ensure supportive scheduling as we greatly respect our teachers' time. And want to do all we can to support them as they implement the evidence-based learning instruction for all students. This slide includes educator groups and the professional learning that was required. We will continue to follow the Virginia Department of Ed guidance regarding professional learning. We also provide ongoing instructional coaching, job-embedded professional learning, and summer essentials to ensure teachers feel supported. And have clarity on the high-quality instructional materials and all other resources included on the Division Literacy Plan. Additionally, new K through three teachers and all four eight teachers responsible for implementing student reading plans will also receive professional learning to support them. Section four asks divisions to list the assessments used to monitor progress. This section has been updated to reflect the four eight screener and maintains the assessments we included last year. Section five requires divisions to include the information regarding progress monitoring tools and approaches. Here, we listed our strategic approach to regularly analyze data across offices at the central office level and the meetings we hold at the school level. In partnership with principals and instructional leadership teams, which you can see noted. The table in the template also includes the school lev- level collaborative planning process that is conducted regularly and on a more frequent basis. When reviewing with teachers, coaches, and administrators, they collaborate and review data to respond to our student needs. Section six requires divisions to describe how the division will involve parents and caregivers in the development and implementation of the student reading plans. And to describe the plan to build successful partnerships in relation to literacy development. We work to achieve this goal through mutually supportive partnerships that include parents, caregivers, and community partnerships. We will place great emphasis on these mutual partnerships and include parents in the development of student reading plans. We will notify parents and caregivers when student's performance on the screener indicates the need for a plan. Families will be invited to participate in the process of developing, implementing, and monitoring the reading plan. Parents will receive a copy of the plan and we will solicit feedback from schools and families on their experience regarding the student reading plan. We have developed a division webpage to share information related to the Virginia Literacy Act and resources to support students' literacy growth at home. Additionally, the webpage links to each school's webpage so parents can easily find the contact information for school staff, including administrators and reading specialists. The Division Literacy Plan you approved is housed on that page. And once we receive you or your approval and the approval from the Virginia Department of Ed, we will replace it with this, with the plan from this evening. We hope that this presentation has provided you with the details needed to navigate the Virginia Department of Ed's template for our K eight Division Literacy Plan. We are already busy at work to ensure that we effectively support our teachers and administrators and ultimately make a positive impact in all of our students' lives. We will return on May twenty seventh to request approval for the plan presented this evening. At this time, we stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
I don't see any questions, um, if colleagues think of any questions, um. Please don't hesitate to send them to Dr. Robertson and Ms. Woodhouse. Um, between now and the next meeting. Um, and I just want to thank you for everything that you do, I know this is a lot to put together, so thank you.
Thank you.
We are now going to move on to tri-campus planning and I'm gonna welcome Melissa Ingram, Executive Director of Facility Services. Dr. Melanie Hamblin, Senior Executive Director of Elementary Schools.
Hi, good evening Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Williams, and Dr. Robertson. Melissa Ingram and I are here tonight to share information and survey results regarding the tri-campus reconfiguration. A community meeting was held Wednesday, April twenty-third from six o'clock until seven o'clock PM at Newtown Elementary School. Forty-nine people attended the meeting. This included fourteen parents, six community members, and twenty-eight staff members. During the meeting, the community was able to learn about the two options for transitioning the tri-campus into two campuses. There were two options, option one would include two uh pre-K through fifth grade schools. Option two was one pre-K through first grade school and one second grade through fifth grade school. At the conclusion of the meeting, participants were invited to participate on an input survey either online or in paper pencil form. A special thank you to Vice Chair Williams, Dr. Green, and Mr. Callen for attending the meeting. In addition to a community meeting held on April twenty-third, community feedback was obtained through an online survey that was available from April fourth through the twenty-seventh. The survey link was available on vbschools.com and emailed to the tri-campus families and staff. The survey was also available, like I said, at the community meeting. Tables provided information about groups who responded to the survey. A total of four, the table you see, excuse me, provides information about the groups who responded to the survey. A survey of four hundred twenty-five people took the survey. The two largest group of respondents were parents and guardians of current students at the tri-campus zone of Diamond Springs, Newtown, and Betty F. Williams Elementary School. And school staff members in the tri-care, tri-campus zone. Overall, one hundred sixty-two or thirty-eight percent of the respondents were parents or guardians of current or future students in the tri-campus zone. These two parent guardian groups were combined for the results on the next slide. People responding to the survey who selected other included family outreach representatives, community advocates, family members, and staff members of other VBCPS schools. Current VP, VBCPS schools and community members in other areas of Virginia Beach. This slide, this slide shows a percentage of survey respondents who preferred each option by group. Option two, which is one pre-K through first grade school and one second through fifth grade school was preferred, was the preferred option for tri-campus parents at sixty-two percent. Tri-campus staff at fifty-seven percent and Bayside tri-campus community members at fifty-eight percent. The other respondent group was evenly split with the same percentage selection, selecting option one and option two. Respondents were asked to select a primary reason for selecting their preferred option. Of the respondents who selected option one of two pre-K through fifth grade schools, fifty-one percent indicated they preferred this option. Because there would be fewer transition views between schools for students. Twenty-four percent preferred this option because of school culture and the sense of community. And fifteen percent selected this option because of the long-term relationships with school staff. Of the respondents who selected option two of one pre-K through first grade school and one second through fifth grade school, grade school, sixty-nine percent of the respondents indicated. They preferred this option due to the developmental needs of the age group. In addition, thirteen percent prefer this option because it would not require splitting the attendance area. I'm gonna turn it over to uh Mrs. Ingram so she can talk about the facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Hamblin, and good evening. Um, from a facilities perspective.
we have shared with you both at the community meetings and in our last brief to you that both educational models are estimated to be cost-neutral from a CIP perspective. Our facilities team will be able to support either option that is chosen. With the existing buildings, Diamond Springs Elementary and Newtown Elementary Schools having been designed to be able to accommodate all grade levels being considered, no significant changes would be required to satisfy either options in the existing buildings, whether they be two pre-K to five schools or a pre-K to one school and grade two to five school. With the same number of students needing to be supported with either option, the main difference is not how much space may be needed additionally, but where that space may be needed, making it, again, cost-neutral. The cost for additional space is estimated to be twenty-five million dollars or less as programmed in the proposed fiscal year twenty-six CIP. Looking at projections and the residing student population, it's currently estimated that the two buildings will need to support one thousand two hundred eighty to one thousand three hundred twenty students. This is the best available data that we have now, and more work will need to be done after an educational model is chosen. This slide in front of you gives you the best available data with preliminary estimates. A range of eighteen to twenty-two additional rooms is estimated to be needed with either option. Additional space would be more evenly distributed in option one between the two schools. Depending on how the attendance zone can be split, there could also be greater variation on this estimated equal distribution. And in option two, it is estimated that a greater need of space would be needed at Newtown Elementary School to support the two-to-five program. Preliminary estimates do anticipate that Newtown Elementary School can support more rooms than Diamond Springs Elementary School. And on this slide, we're now looking at the existing attendance zone for a tri-campus. Either option would need reassignment of the attendance zone to two schools instead of three that it now serves. With option one, an area of the attendance zone would need to be assigned to Diamond Springs Elementary School, the school furthest to the east, and another area of the attendance zone would need to be assigned to Newtown Elementary. This will be done with further community input through a BUC process. Option two would also require reassignment of grade levels to these two schools, pre-K, K, and first grade to Diamond Springs Elementary School and second, third, fourth, and fifth grades to Newtown Elementary School. The next steps in this process will be getting direction from you, the school board, on May twenty-seventh during the action portion of the agenda. And Dr. Hamblin and I are happy to take any questions that you might have at this time.
Mr. Cummings?
I just had two quick questions. Who all falls into the other bucket on the slide three? Walk me through this, since that's like ninety-nine people.
Yes, just one second, let me grab that. So the other combination was -- I apologize. Included family outreach representatives, school community advocates, family members, and staff of other VBCPS schools, current students of VBCPS, and community members that live in other areas of the beach outside of the tri-campus area.
Okay. And then my second, kind of just my second follow-up question is, within the survey, did we have open-ended questions just to -- no?
We did not.
Okay, I was just kind of curious if people provided any responses towards why they leaned in one direction or not, so.
No, they did not.
Okay.
They had the choices which were, you know, the reduction of transitions, those selected choices, but it wasn't an open-ended choice, no.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question on slide seven. There's estimated additional rooms needed for the two options presented. And in option two, it says fourteen to sixteen additional rooms, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm just asking, just to make sure, are -- well, in any scenario that require us to get trailers?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not employing trailers, thank you.
Dr. Green, I think you're next.
Dr. Hamblin, and your team, thank you very much because I know it took a lot of time to get all of this together, as well as Ms. Ingram and Mr. Freeman's team with the cost effect because we know during these times that is also equally as important as well. If you could, for me, slide number four, where we have the survey options on slide four, I just want to bring to everyone's attention that the parents for option one was forty-nine percent, and those are parents, I just want to make sure, that live within the district and are either have current students there or had students, and that the second option, sixty-two percent of the community of parents, of parents who have students attached to the school prefer option two, which is the developmental stage, and I just want to make sure that.
It could be current students or future students.
And that is, and I think that's an important piece for everyone to consider when we vote next time as to what the community of parents, because we always say we value our parent input, and we did receive it, so thank you.
Mr. Callen?
Did the feedback you received the evening of the event involving the community members, did it cause a different perspective for you as administrations and planners on this process? Did you end up reassessing your recommendation?
You know, we're going to move forward with what the decisions of the board. I certainly understand and heard what the community said. My educational experience, again, it does not necessarily sway me from what I believe is educationally sound for children, but I do understand that their comfort level, right now they're in a tri-campus area, so they're familiar with the current practices and where they are in that model. I would challenge anyone to go into the majority of our schools, which are pre-K through five schools, and see that the instructional pieces that go on in a pre-K through second-grade school go on in all fifty-five of our elementary schools. And so I certainly respect and value what our community is saying and certainly will go in the direction that the board wants to go, but as thirty years of experience in the world of education, it did not sway what I believe is educationally sound for children.
Great, thank you.
Vice Chair Williams?
That was actually my question as well, but I wanted to thank you all again and reiterate what Dr. Green said. It was just so nice to be able to be there, you know, in person and actually talk. And I was kind of surprised to see the results because when I was talking around, it was like fifty-fifty. I couldn't really even tell. And I did want to say that Ms. Felton also joined us. I don't know if you announced that, but Ms. Felton was also there as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton, for coming.
So thank you so much.
Okay, I'm going to speak and then I'll go back to those that are -- because you've spoken once, right? Yes, okay, just want to be sure. So I'm looking at this data, and I know that you mentioned future students. And I think from a data standpoint, that particular number doesn't make up the lion's share of that between current students, future students. So, you know, that's, it's eighteen people versus a hundred and forty-four, so, you know, it does add to it. This is one of those things where in conversations with people in the community, and I've had a number of people in the community that I've had conversations with about this, have signaled that they would want a pre-K through one model and a two-through-five. And having been a single parent previously and living in poverty before, my heart feels like that my students' school building was the most stable thing that I had to bring them to that building. It was the most stable thing in their life at the time. And so on that side, I feel like the pre-K through five model is one that I personally prefer. But I'm going to signal at this particular point in time that I intend to support the pre-K through first and the second-through-fifth model as, you know, our community, we're already reducing transitions. So I think that we can try this, and if the community comes back and the community says this isn't working, we want to do pre-K through five, or the data shows that it's changing something, then I think that would be something that we would take another look at. But I just want to signal, I am going to plan to support option two. With that, Dr. Green?
Thank you. And like Dr. Hamblin, I'm going to trump you, no pun intended. I'm an educator longer than Dr. Hamblin has been, and my focus has always been on the child developmentally as a teacher, school counselor, administrator, former executive director for Student Support Services. So for me, the developmental piece is extremely important. Also, in my District Four, we have the only Title One middle school that these students go to. So to say that we have to be like the other schools, I beg to differ on that because I think, because of the nurturing, the developmental needs, and that targeted focus, it has helped those students in my community to be successful. I also say that to say, we, you know, people keep saying, oh, they still have more transitions. We have reduced the transitions by two. And some of the comments, you know, some of you heard comments one evening for two hours. Believe me, those of you who are also active in your communities, you're never off duty. You run to the food line, and you hear the comments. And what I think I heard from District Four, and I told them, well, you need to go fill out a survey if that's how you feel, is that they appreciate the nurturing that they do receive. Also, you know, the parents have gotten accustomed to students being separated by age and, you know, having to, you know, you know, we didn't get into transportation and things. But this option, option two, is, in my professional opinion as well, Dr. Hamblin, and we can continue to debate the merits of that. But I think option two for the community for which I live in as well, so see, I get data that you don't have because I live in that community. I'm a member of that community. I visit bus stops. I see these parents in grocery stores, at the Walmart, Target. I mean, so I have a different perspective as well, and the data for me unequivocally supports, I will not have a problem saying yes, option two. Thank you.
And I accidentally skipped over Mr. Bowen's deal, so we'll go to Mr. Bowen's deal, then Ms. Melnick. You're not in line? Oh, okay.
Okay, on the paper, I believe that option one looks better, in my opinion. However, the people did say that they wanted option two. I'm really not opposed to option two. One of the things I was curious about was when Chair Brown said something about if it doesn't work, we can go ahead and change it. I'm kind of curious on what that would actually involve. If you kind of know what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Once the buildings or the wings are added, and I know that this is Mr. Freeman's expertise and certainly Melissa's expertise, the switching of the schools after that point would be more costly, unless I'm wrong.
So what that would involve to switch to an option one would be to assign an area of each attendance zone to the schools, and we would just go through that process with the space that's allocated to each of the school buildings. So there would be the need to just consider what's been built ahead of time with option two as that, if option was, was switched to it. But it would be a process that we would deal with the BUC, and it would be able to be done.
Well, just keeping in mind that by the time, after it was built, Newtown will be much larger. Newtown will be much larger because it's going to contain second, third, fourth, and fifth, and the other school would be just pre-K kindergarten first. And so if you were to choose to go K five after that, the school, the size, the number of students that the children, that the buildings could accommodate would still have to be within those larger and smaller reins.
Ms. Melnick?
As a parent and an educator, I too feel well-equipped to weigh in on this. I taught first grade, but the truth is, we asked the community. That's what this board decided to do. We went to the community, the community spoke. And I'm going to honor their wishes. I actually like option two better anyway, but we asked, we spoke, and we should deliver on that.
So, Dr. Robertson, do you need any direction from the board on which one we're voting on at our next meeting? I mean, how will we?
In our next meeting, we will give you the two options to vote on.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate all your work on this. And we are now on to federal grant applications, and we welcome back Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning.
Thank you. Good evening again, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Williams, the school board, and Dr. Robertson. I am Lorena Kelly, as you noted. I am here with a team of colleagues again this evening to share with you an overview of the twenty-five-twenty-six federal grant applications for programs authorized under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of nineteen sixty-five as amended by the Every Student Succeed Act of twenty fifteen. Federal guidelines require school board approval of these grant applications. We bring these applications forward to you annually for your review and approval. The purpose of this presentation is to provide you an overview of the grants. The Virginia Department of Education has established an application deadline of July first, twenty twenty-five. This slide provides an overview of the past, current, and projected funding amounts for each grant. The final twenty-five-twenty-six award amounts for all grants will be determined at a later date. Level funding is based on current year's awards and is used for the purpose of developing the twenty-five-twenty-six application budgets. The Title One Part Eight grant is anticipated for just under seventeen point seven million dollars. The application was prepared, and schools were identified to be Title One schools using data from the Community Eligibility Provisions, or CEP, data reports. Title One Part Eight funds provide additional financial assistance to schools with high percentages of children from low-income families to help ensure that all children meet challenging state academic content and achievement standards. The twenty-five-twenty-six application includes Title One and pre-K support staff and resources, instructional staffing allocations beyond the division allocations. Such positions include additional literacy leaders, math coaches, instructional administrative assistants, school counselors, behavior intervention specialists, teacher assistants, family outreach representatives, gifted resource teachers, an ESL teacher, and a social worker. Additional funding for tutoring, field trips, stipends, incentives, and summer programs are included in the grant application. Professional learning for instructional staff and family engagement supports are also provided. Title Eight Part F of the ESEA mandates that divisions provide equitable services for eligible private schools. Additional funding for instructional supplies and technology programs are also provided. A memo dated May sixth, twenty twenty-five was sent to the board with the administration's recommendations for schools to receive Title One funding for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year. with the administration's recommendations for schools to receive Title I funding for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Title I Part D, Subpart Two is anticipated for just under one hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. The purpose of this grant is to improve educational services for neglected and delinquent children and youth under the age of twenty-one in correctional facilities and for other at-risk populations to prepare them for secondary school, secondary school completion, training, employment, and further education. In addition, the funds are used to support students residing in delinquent facilities, to support the transition of students from those facilities and the Virginia Beach Juvenile Detention Center back to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, including Renaissance Academy, and to support dropout prevention programs. The Title Two Part A grant is anticipated for just over two million dollars. This grant provides funds to improve the skills of teachers and the quality of instruction in core academic subjects in elementary and secondary schools. It supports activities for the development of teachers, principals, and other school leaders. The program aims to improve high-quality systems of support for excellent teaching and learning. Title Two, the Title Two grant will fund additional instructional coaches as either literacy leaders or math specialists to serve in elementary, middle, and high schools. Title eight, Part F mandates the division provides equitable services for eligible private schools. Title three, Part A, is anticipated at just under three hundred thousand dollars. This grant is utilized to fund the salary and benefits of English lang- of an English-language learner instructional specialist. This specialist assists ESL and classroom teachers with instructional support as well as provides professional development for ESL and classroom teachers. The grant also provides funding for educators to attend professional learning relative to the English learners' and best practices. The twenty-five, twenty-six application includes additional funds to support stipends for English learner family engagement liaisons and to support family engagement activities. Furthermore, the grant funds Elevation, which is a digital platform that allows teachers and administrators to access English learner student data, supports digital meetings for student accommodation, planning, and monitoring purposes, and provides federally mandated documents in multiple languages. Again, Title eight, Part F of the ESEA mandates that divisions provide equitable services for eligible private schools. The Title Four Part A grant is anticipated at just over one point three million and funds are intended to improve students' academic achievement by increasing the capacity of school divisions to provide all students with access to a well-rounded education, ensure safe and healthy environments, and increase the effective use of technology. Support from the Title Four Part A grant include, but are not limited to, financial support for advanced placement and international buckler exam fees, graduation labs to close achievement gaps and improve graduation rates, supplemental staffing needs, grad and lit coaches, providing classroom materials, including intervention resources, and professional learning, and Title eight, Part F of ESEA mandates that divisions provide equitable services for eligible private schools. Thank you for allowing me to present this information to you this evening. The applications will be posted for public review and comment. And we will return to you at the next board meeting to request consent for submission to the Virginia Department of Ed. We stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly, for your presentation. Quick question, my, you know, I know the answer, but I feel that the viewing public needs to have the answer, given all the discussion around diversity, equity, inclusion, and abilities. So could you explain who benefits from the equitable services in our private schools?
We follow the same requirements for the grants in private schools. We are provided a specific amount that um is based on private school enrollment. So the students in that, in those private schools will be able to have the same um, the, the same requirements of the federal grants that they would have received in public schools in their private school setting.
Okay, can, can you give us maybe one example of comparable services as to why in a private school, a student would have that? Such as if there's a special need or some other requirement?
Sure, we could definitely share that information. But I can share, I, I can share a very easy example. I'll use Title Two, which is aimed to in- um, improve educational quality of teachers and administrators. So we receive specific funding um, based on our data. We look for professional learning opportunities. We have a portion of our budget that our private schools receive based on their student enrollment. And they are also able to take professional learning opportunities based on that amount of funding that um, required. All of our grants do that. Title I has moved over to um, us uh, being the people who are overseeing that, which was a change, that's why we're including it on each slide. But uh, there are the same requirements that are necessary for the federal grants that we uh, follow. The private schools follow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Uh, I had one question, but you answered it right when uh, you were giving the presentation. So I had written it down, but you already answered it because you're so thorough, so thank you. All right, we are now to our budget update. We welcome Crystal Payne, Chief Financial Officer.
So good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Williams, School Board members, Dr. Robertson. So on May second, twenty twenty-five, Governor Yonkin completed action on the state budget sent to him by the General Assembly. With, with regard to K twelve education, none of the governor's amendments altered the funding amounts for the four major K twelve education categories. The support cap remains funded. Bonuses for SOQ positions were approved to be paid out this fiscal year. And additional allocations were made for ESL and special education. This presentation is to provide the board with an update, review the timeline, and outline administration's recommendations. This slide outlines the agenda. We will review the budget timeline, provide an update specific to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, highlight key budget needs, share the administration's recommendations, and discuss next steps, followed by any board questions or comments. This timeline begins with the SEON adoption on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The SEON was presented to city council on April first. The governor signed the final budget on May second. Today, May thirteenth, we are providing you with an update. And city council has approved our SEON budget this evening in their meeting. We plan to return to the board on May twenty-seventh for action. Once approved, we will coordinate with city staff to add the amended budget to the city council's agenda for final approval sometime in June. This slide shows the adopted state budget resulting in a net increase of approximately thirteen point six million dollars in revenue. This includes two point seven million for special education add-on, nine point five million for standards of quality basic aid, five hundred eighty-nine thousand for the compensation supplement, five hundred ninety-two thousand for at-risk funded out of the lottery, and two hundred fifty-six thousands for standards of quality at-risk programs. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, the city council did approve our SEON budget along with their budget. Within their budget, there's a projection for their revenue sharing formula that shows that they um, project that this revenue sharing formula will provide the school division with an additional two point nine million dollars. That two point nine million dollars has been put into a reserve. Um, it's a school general fund reserve on the city's books. And that, right now, is being recommended for us to put, put in the CIP or to reduce PRFB bonds, but just definitely into the CIP program. That was approved through their budget this evening. We did not show it on this slide because when this slide was created, it wasn't approved yet. We, when we come back to you on the twenty-seventh, we'll have a revised slide that shows that additional uh, revenue sharing formula in the local line item. The budget needs is identified by the school board um, when additional state funding amounts were shared at the conclusion of the General Assembly's budget amendments. It included four point one million to increase the instructional pay scale entry level salary from two percent to three percent, paired with a one point five percent step increase for a total of four point five percent increase. Four point eight million to restore SEON Part Two proposed cuts and two million to increase funding for CIP Pago. Of course, should the board have other needs to present, we can do our best to provide feedback on the use of the remaining ten point nine million dollars in new revenue with the understanding that the two point seven million must be designated for special education. One important caveat is we need to present the board with a revised and final operating budget and CIP on May twenty-seventh, with staff contracts slated to be shared with staff the final week of school. Administration's recommendations for twenty twenty-six align with the identified budget needs. Two point seven million for special education, the four point one million to strengthen educator compensation by increasing that instructional pay scale entry level salary from two percent to three percent with the one point five percent step increase for a total of four and a half percent. Um, this aligns with the compensation increase for the unified scale previously approved as part of the SEON. Four point eight million again to restore the Part Two proposed reductions in the SEON, an area where Dr. Robertson has reiterated throughout the budget process, um, which includes cuts that will negatively impact operations. And two million to increase funding for CIP Pago, an area the school board and city council have a high interest. A recap of the March twenty-fifth SEON Part Two proposed reductions are the elimination of thirty-four central office positions resulting in approximately two point four million dollars in savings. While, while some positions are currently vacant as a result of the SEON, they are integral to supporting core operations, and we would like to open them to staffing. Staff in field positions would be reassigned based on certifications. This slide outlines over two point three million dollars in line item cuts also shared with the board on March twenty-fifth. Most cuts fall under the school division services area to minimize direct instructional impact. However, these items are essential for maintaining clean, safe, and comfortable school environments. Notably, the proposal includes ending hourly pay for new teachers during orientation, which would be integrated into the end service week when contracts begin. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, administration recommends distributing the six million, five hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars in one-time bonus funds this fiscal year with a seven hundred and seventy-five dollar bonus to employees on the instructional scale and five hundred and twenty-five dollar bonus to employees on the unified scale. This will be fully covered by the additional state money allocated for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. A reminder of SOQ positions is shown on this slide. So the six million, five eighty-four, three twenty-six funds a one-time bonus for SOQ-funded positions, which totaled six thousand, one hundred and sixteen point four-two positions. That's comprised of one thousand, seven hundred and four point seven five SOQ-funded support positions and four thousand, four hundred and eleven point six seven SOQ-funded instructional positions. We presented to you earlier in the year, we, like most school divisions in the Commonwealth, staff above SOQ levels to meet student needs. Even for SOQ positions, state funding is partial. Localities must fund the difference between total cost and what the state pays. Some examples of how the SOQ positions work. We are funded for eight elementary assistant principals, but we authorize sixteen. The state funds us for thirty-seven kindergarten aides, and we authorize two hundred and forty-two. For grades one through five teachers, the state funds us nine eighty-three. We authorize one thousand, two hundred and one. For technology professionals, the state funds us thirty-nine. We authorize eighty-eight. And for operation and maintenance, technical and clerical, the state funds us five hundred and eighty-two, and we authorize eleven hundred, and there are others. The standards of quality set the minimum expectations for educational programs in Virginia public schools. The Virginia Department of Education calculates the funding needed to meet these standards based on specific formulas, including student enrollment, staffing ratio, and prevailing sal- salary data. In Virginia, nine, non-SOQ positions refer to staff roles not funded under the state's SOQ funding formula. These positions go beyond the minimum staffing requirements that the Commonwealth funds for public K through twelve schools. Any staff beyond the SOQ formulas are not funded under the SOQ. And examples include custodial staff, bus drivers and assistants, food services staff, security assistants, and budget and finance staff. So our next steps, as previously mentioned, um, city council did approve um, the SEON budget this evening. We're seeking feedback and guidance from the school board tonight. This, that is necessary because personnel contracts must be finalized and distributed before staff leave in mid-June. And the city council must review and approve our revised budget after the board takes action planned for May twenty-seventh. Upon board approval, the final versions will be submitted to city council for action. That concludes this presentation, and we'll be welcome any questions and feedback from the board.
So, well, Mr. Callen?
Slide four gives us the spreadsheet that we've seen on many an occasion. And we end up with the additional dollars of thirteen million, five eighty-five, oh sixty-nine. And then we have a series of categories, five altogether, that show how that is being chipped away until we get to a bottom line of zero, so where you don't have any indebtedness. But my question is, the information that's shown under the how funds are to be allocated blue bar is not the same as the information on page five. And it was in the handout that I had picked up on Friday and was reviewing the hard copy that I always do. So yeah, threw me a curveball, and now I'm trying to recover.
You do such a good job at that, though. Um, so this is where we presented it, uh, we presented it the old way, but then we decided that it was important for us to present how that thirteen point six million dollars was received in what areas. So the bottom of this chart shows you that allocation of that thirteen point six million.
On page, on slide four?
On slide four, that is not really what, how that's being allocated. That's how that thirteen point six million dollars from the state comes through those funding sources. So we were just trying to give you more information that there's a special ad, ed, add-on. There's basic school aid. There's a piece for compensation supplement. Just showing you how the state gave us that thirteen point six million.
But those are debits, not credits, correct?
They are just, they are...
Is it an add-on or a subtraction?
It is showing you how that thirteen point six million dollars was arrived at. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Does that help?
Slide five is the important slide then, as it relates to, what do we do with the dollars that are available?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks for the curveball.
Ms. Rogers?
Thanks so much for the presentation. I have a quick question. I don't know what slide, this is slide six. It says for the twenty uh, twenty twenty-five school year bonus funds to give teachers, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and all other full-time employees, five twenty-five. Does that include our directors, executive directors, senior directors, chiefs? All of them will get a bonus?
If you're on the unified scale, the way it's, that, that recommendation, yes.
But if we don't give it to unified scale, then we cut out our custodians and our bus drivers and our...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll reiterate the need to separate that out. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, my question is also similar. I think the boards had kind of very, a few offline discussions. I won't speak for everybody, but dividing that lump sum, you know, equally among everyone. Um, and then I know there's also been some thoughts about what Ms. Rogers just said. How do we land on the, I'm just kinda curious. How would we land on the seven seventy-five, five twenty-five?
I got it. So uh, all the super, the re- superintendents of Region Two were sharing how they were going to spend the money for the bonus. And so there's fifteen school divisions of Region Two. I wanna say four or five of those divisions are, are giving um, the bonus from the state as it was delivered to instructional staff. One of those divisions is, is not only doing that, but they're giving a little bit more... One of those divisions is, is not only doing that, but they're giving a little bit more to pay for the taxes. So it's a straight one thousand dollars. The other tens, ten school divisions are, uh, breaking it up where, because, you know, for the same reasons we broke it up here, where they're doing seven fifty and five hundred. Uh, we, when we looked at our dollar amount, we could get the seven seventy-five and five twenty-five. If you recall, we originally talked about whether or not we wanted to just take the total amount and divide it equally among all full-time employees, which would come to about six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Six fifty, six hundred and fifty dollars per person. Uh, so this is just a proposal. Again, the board can give us direction here on what they want to do with these bonuses. Um, the rationale here was is to not leave any employees behind. And so some of our lowest-paid employees would not receive any of this bon- bonus. And when I talked to Teacher Forum Leadership Council, Teacher Assembly, and my superintendent's teachers advisory councils, it was two to one in those votes where those teachers felt like, although they recognized that they would appreciate the thousand dollars, they didn't feel comfortable saying, well, no one else gets it except us. So. But now, again, that's a limited group, so I don't want anybody to think that that represents all teachers. Those were the three groups that I spoke with.
Yeah, thank you. I'd, I'd love to hear some other thoughts from folks on the board on how we go about that.
Mr. Culpepper?
Uh, in addition on slide six, so slide six, like you just talked about, things is down to zero. And on top of that, did I understand you correctly that the, uh, the city was going to add two point?
It's two point nine million.
Two point nine million, which we expect to go to Pago or something.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have two things, and I don't have a button to put myself in line, so. Um, but I did check with Mr. Bowen Steele, and he was okay with me going first. Um, the first one is, uh, back to what Mr. Cummings, um, mentioned about the bonus and the arrival of that number, and, um, I will share that I actually had talked to Dr. Robertson earlier today about that very item, um. I feel like an evil, even level bonus at, of six hundred and fifty dollars, um, it really supports our bus drivers, bus driver assistants, oh, or non-SOQ. Are these FTE? Custodial staff that are FTE, I guess our bus driver was, may not meet that criteria, correct? Are they full-time?
There are partial full-time, par- partial FTEs that are on the, the list, and so they would get a partial of what we ever, whatever is decided by the board um, to pay out.
Okay, that's very good information. Thank you. Um, our food service workers, our security assistants and staff. Um, I feel like all of those employees really help our division work. Um, and I don't want to leave any of them behind or create an us versus them mentality, um, when it comes to that, so. Just as one board member, those are my thoughts. I'm interested to hear, um, my other colleagues' thoughts on this, but I, I think I lean into um, the six hundred and fifty dollar bonus for everyone. Um, kind of just to signal too that we value everyone that works for this school division. Um, the second thing is, is, um, Dr. Robertson, if you could just clarify something, because when I had asked you over the phone, I want to make sure that I understood properly. So I asked you if guidance counselors would receive the seven seventy-five bonus or the five twenty-five bonus. Would you mind sharing with the board what you told me?
Yeah, so the, the way the, uh, money was allocated, it is, in the slide, is for the SOQ. Um, in a SOQ position, uh, originally, there are some guidance counselors that aren't covered in SOQ. So the proposal that we had here is, if you're on the instructional pay scale, you would get seven seventy-five. So that means all guidance counselors would get seven seventy-five.
I appreciate that clarification because I mu- I must have misunderstood. All right, with that, Mr. Bowen Steele?
Um, after visiting a few schools this year, I've got a chance to talk to custodial staff and food service. And, uh, mostly what they really want is to just be appreciated and know that they are doing their job and, and, and they're happy. I've never really met any bus drivers, but my opinion on it is, if the bus drivers don't get the students to school, and if there's no food when they get there and nothing's clean, we're not really doing much. So I'm definitely in favor of including the the, uh, non-SOQs in getting the same amount across the board. Just want to let that be known.
So we're going to go to Dr. Green, and then we'll go to you because you didn't, did you speak already? Okay, and then you next.
Thank you. And Dr. Robertson, I'm doing this for Mr. Jamison and Ms. Brown as well. School counselors, I'm so happy they're going to be a part of, um, this as well. And, and the reason why I say that, because we no longer call them guidance, they're school counselors. Did I do good, Mr. Jamison? Okay. Um, I also want to say that all employees in the school division contribute to student learning. I don't care what your role is, whether you are central office administrator, bus driver, lab tech, you work in HR, hiring the staff, cafeteria, everyone contributes to the success of our students. So I believe that everyone should receive some form of the bonus for that. Regardless, it shouldn't be restricted to pay grade, because everyone that, they contribute regardless of your position.
Mr. Callen?
If you're taking the equivalent of a straw poll on this, then I too would be inclined to make sure that the dollars that are available for a bonus get shared amongst all of the employees.
Vice Chair Williams?
Um, yes, I too think that, um, the bonus should be shared with all e- equally, with the six hundred and fifty dollars for all. Thank you.
So, um, um, Ms. Felton?
Thank you. Um, does nurses fall in here anywhere?
Sure.
Where, where?
I'm going to look through. They're on unified scale.
Okay, great. Uh, I am for, uh, equal for all the employees, because it's been a thing with me as well, especially the nurses and the custodios that really makes our building. And I really, I am glad that they are being considerate and considered for this particular bonus. Thank you so much. I, I am for the.
Okay, so it sounds like there are at least six or seven board members that would prefer to divide this equally. Um, so that's, that's what I'm hearing. So. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none. We are now to Legislative Committee update, and I turn the floor over to Dr. Green.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I serve as the Chair of the Legislative Committee, and on that committee, um, school board members, Ms. Dar- Dyer, as well as Ms. Rogers. Um, we, uh, comprise the Legislative Committee. On April twenty-ninth, I, um, most of my colleagues should remember receiving an email that had the uh, Virginia School Board Association's, uh, twenty twenty-five legislative, um, positions. And in that email, I requested that, um, any changes be sent by May eighth. Our committee met this past Friday, May ninth, and we didn't have any changes. So, Madam Chair, at this time, I don't think there will be a need for any action uh, with regards to the legislative twenty twenty-five, um, agenda for the V S B A. The second item that, um, came, that was presented at our May ninth meeting, um, came from our, um, lobbyist Joel Andra- Anders. The, um, final, um, resolutions of bills that passed in the twenty twenty-five session. Um, so Madam Chair, I will defer to you as to how you want to bring Mr. Anders, you and Dr. Robertson to kind of review the bills or, or the legis- the now one-July laws that, um, will, uh, have impact on us. And Ms. Dyer, or Ms. Rogers can correct me if I'm wrong, um, he did indicate there was little that would significantly hit us, but I think it would, I would recommend that we have him come and share with everyone what happened in the twenty twenty-five legislative, uh, session in General Assembly.
Thank you. So I will have, um, staff reach out to Joel, and we'll determine whether we're going to put it on information for presentation or in a workshop. So we'll get that date. So thank you so much, and I appreciate that update. Um, so there will be no action on that update. And we are now going to return to public comments. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the next speaker?
Give me one second. Okay. So our next speakers will be Chris Lewis, Jennifer Franklin, and then Ian Springer Woods.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Robinson. Um, my name is Chris Lewis, and I know there's been a big break between the speakers and when I'm speaking here, so uh, I'm gonna kind of ad lib just a little bit right now so that you can hear something a little bit different. And I'm actually talking to you, but I'm also talking to the people who are out there watching this, either now, live, or later. Um, I'm really concerned that we have diversity, equity, and inclusion in this country, in this city, in this state, um, and it's being demonized when, in reality, there are a whole lot of people out there. I mean, there, there are many educators, I'm sure, in this room that I'm talking to, who I don't need to explain diversity, equity, and inclusion, what that is. But there are tens of thousands of people out there who may be watching this and just need a little bit of education because we're demonizing this, we're creating a boogeyman that we're using as a wedge to divide our country. And, and it's really sad because it's at the expense of our education system, our teachers, our students, and, and everybody who is just simply trying to lift up everybody in the classroom to reach their potential. I, I've been in education for thirty years, and the one thing that I can tell you is there's no boogeyman with D E I or with diversity, equity, and, and inclusion. What it is, is what teachers do every single day. You come into the classroom, you have a students of thirty. Everybody is at a different level, and your job is to make sure you see every one of those students. Those students who might be otherwise invisible, or those who might be suffering in silence because they're not heard. What diversity, equity, and inclusion is doing is really nothing more than trying to identify who we need to reach. It's doing it every single day. Your central offices are already doing it. Your leadership is already doing it. This is your job as board members. You wouldn't have wanted to do this job if you didn't want to see every student succeed. So what I'd like to tell the public out there today is you can't be afraid of D E I or diversity, equity, and inclusion. So what you need to do right now is you do need, going back locally now, to put a pause on these changes, these, these redactions, whatever it is you're doing. And you need to let the teachers, the administrations, and the schools get back to what they are good at. Making sure kids learn and reach their maximum potential. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Franklin, then Ian Springer, Springer Woods, and then Suzanne Losberg.
Good evening. At these meetings, I always appreciate hearing different perspectives. One speaker recently said, equity is a zero-sum game, that helping one group means taking from another. That idea reminded me of the many exclusive clubs I've encountered over the years, especially the unspoken ones, like the Good Old Boys Club in the military and finance sector. You couldn't apply, you just knew if you were in or not. As a woman, you might be welcomed as an affiliate if you knew how to fit in, if you were agreeable and added levity, but rarely was your seat at the table offered based solely on skill or substance. So I worked harder, sharpened my skills, earned respect, but not inclusion. Thankfully, I had a strong foundation from adoptive parents who taught me discipline, resilience, and faith. That foundation propelled me forward despite the lack of membership, and thankfully, some things have changed and why we have some, had some female chairs of the school board for many years, thanks to forward momentum for gender equality. True equity doesn't diminish anyone's place, it simply expands the table so talent determines who gets a voice. But let's be honest, not everyone gets that foundation. Some children grow up in what I call the school of hard knocks, another type of club. Their reality includes food and housing instability, a lack of life skills, and no guidance on how to work toward a better future. And when you graduate from that school, oftentimes you're not change, uh, chasing prestige or privilege, you're just trying to survive. This isn't just about race or gender. My Caucasian ex-husband grew up poor without a stable home life. He was skilled, driven, and did his best to overcome, but the weight of that early experience never fully lifted. He passed away last year at fifty-five years old. My daughter lost her father and someone who tried hard to make it despite the odds. What helped him to get as far as he did? Hope. A handful of people in his life who believed in him, who gave him a glimpse of what he could be. That's the power of belief or support of be, of being given a path forward. That's why equal opportunity matters, because life isn't always fair, and because we can help level the field while students are still in our schools. When kids are raised in the right club, they already know the rules and the rewards. But when they come from chaos, the path isn't so clear. School might be the only shot at structure, encouragement, and vision. So let's not fill our prisons or our morgues with the potential that we failed to nurture. Let's fill our communities with responsible, hopeful individuals who are given the chance to believe in a brighter future because someone handed them the tools to build it. Growing up, I often saw the acronym W W J D. What would Jesus do? He didn't surround himself with the wealthy or the powerful. He walked with the sick, the broken, the overlooked. He uplifted the ones society cast aside. Similarly, Pope Leo made waves not by preaching but by serving. He walked miles to deliver food, slept on dirt fo- floors, carried the sick, and taught under broken rooftops. His work was quiet but profound. So I ask you this, what will this legacy say about you? And if Jesus were here today, we're faced with the decision to help those who need it most, to keep the programs that are needed most, what would he do? That's not for me to answer, but for you to decide. Thank you for your service.
Our next speaker is Ian Springer Woods, then Susan Losberg, then Bernita Richardson.
Hello, I'm a parent in, uh, Ms. Brown's district. Um, in February two thousand and twenty-four, Forbes Magazine put together, excuse me, SAT scores, ACT scores, MCAT scores, uh, fourth and eighth grade reading and math scores, and they came up with a system to rank states by, uh, how good their test scores are. Top five, Massachusetts, Utah, New Jersey, New Hampshire, Connecticut. Now, does anybody think that Massachusetts didn't have, uh, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion programs in two thousand and twenty-four? Or New Hampshire? Of course they did. And I know, uh, uh, number seven on the list had diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, because number seven was us. So as Dr. Robertson was pointing out, this idea that's been floating around, the diversity, equity, and inclusion somehow makes academics worse, it's false, it's a lie. They make it better. And by the way, the lowest on that list, Oklahoma. And there are some people, uh, around here who would want us to get closer to Okla- to, to Oklahoma. Now, as far as the, the, if the, uh, the EO goes, I was at the special meeting, and I was listening to the board do its business and, and the normal business and the tone that the normal business had. And then they started reading the text of the, the, uh, the, uh, executive order. And my English teacher brain went ouch because it's just stupidly written. It's written like a caricature of a mob boss. It's not written like a serious person writes an order. Um, and it's written vaguely on purpose. It's written vaguely on purpose so that, uh, uh, people will be scared. And so that, um, the administration, at any point in time, when they have the uh, scapegoat de jour that they decide for the week, can point at something and go, kill that. they decide for the week, can point at something and go, "Kill that." It falls under the category, we're gonna say it falls under the category, kill that. And that's why it's being declared a a an illegal order. So when you send me an email, Ms. Brown, and in the email you say that um special education isn't going to be included, it's not gonna be hu- it's gonna be hurt, I can't believe you. Because this executive order is so vague that it could be, it could go after anything. And you haven't shown that you have a red line yet. You haven't done with all these votes, you keep having the votes over and over, and you could be acquiescing to this executive order that is probably gonna be illegal anyway. And so I don't know where your red line is. I don't know where where there's a point where you'll say, "Okay, administration, we are not gonna hurt our students anymore. We're not gonna do that thing that hurts our students." So I'm hoping that there is a red line somewhere. I'm hoping that there's some point where the administration, if they come down and said, "We're gonna try to hurt you," um, you won't just go, "Yes, sir." You'll actually stand up for the students because you should be listening to the current consensus of 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 experts in their field, not to a mob boss.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Loesberg, then Bernita Richardson, then Katie Squibb.
Good evening. I reside in District Six, Mr. Callen's district. I too have thrown out what I came to speak to tonight because there's really no point. So I'm gonna ad lib myself. Tonight was a dark day for Virginia Beach. Um, there was a collective shiver as the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-three, or twenty-thirty strategic plan was read. I was sickened. I just, all I can think about is, what are you so afraid of? What are you so afraid of? Why do you wanna go back? I'm old enough to know I don't wanna go back. The actions of the school board, the majority of the school board tonight, illustrate that we do in fact need D E I. The actions of several boys at Kellum High School, not long ago, a few weeks ago, a month ago, illustrate that we still need D E I. When I first moved into my neighborhood over behind First Colonial High School, I went to show my children the new park. There were swastikas, spray painted all over. That was our welcome. My kids, when they first joined Facebook, I used to follow them, and uh it was, it's a pretty disgusting kid, comments by kids I knew in our, in Great Neck area about kids, black kids, Jewish kids, kids with disabilities. I have so many stories to tell. History will not look back kindly in what happened here tonight, and it's not gonna look kindly on what's happening here on a larger scale in our country. It's a black mark, it will not look good, and we will rectify the situation. So I say to people listening tonight, elections matter. We did elect four new members on the school board who have voted to support D E I. One of the school board members here didn't even have somebody running against him. I will let you know, if you don't know, that there is a governor's race in November. If we get that, if we win that, and we have the House of District, this district uh delegates that we that we keep, we can do some damage and protect our 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 schools. I will also say in two thousand and twenty-six, in November, Districts Two, Four, Six, Eight, Nine, and Ten are up. Don't sleep, don't sit this one out. D E I does not mean lowering standards, it means raising all students by making sure every one of them has the support they need to meet our standards. Isn't that why you're sitting up there? Isn't that your job? Your decision to dismantle D E I efforts in our schools is is as short-sighted as it is shameful? You had no plan, you have not been able to coherently describe what these changes specifically would be, aside from a name change, leaving a path of confusion and chaos. How will the gutting of D E I impact present policy, present programs? Most importantly, how will it affect our kids? I have more to say, but I'm gonna run out of town.
And that is time.
Out of time, thank you.
Our next speaker is Bernita Richardson, Katie Squibb, and then Ken Sutton.
Good evening, members of the board. Let's stop pretending this is about policy, pretending it's about protecting institutions or following some unclear executive order. What's happening right now is simple. It's racially mo- a racially motivated attack on the words diversity, equity, inclusion, carried out under convenient cover of confusion and legal gray area. Look at the facts, three separate federal courts and three completely different jurisdictions have now temporarily enjoined the so-called Dear Colleague Executive Order and its associated documents. Let's pause. While the litigation plays out, because the courts thinks there is a substantial likelihood that they're unconstitutional, the legal risk you claim to be reacting to no longer exists. Other school dist- districts have already reversed course, they didn't wait to be told, they did what was right. This board should do the same. And let's be clear, it was never about lea- legality. If it were, you would have waited for the courts to rule, sought out legal experts, engaged with the communities that would be most affected, but you didn't. You rushed to gut D E I policies with no regard to the harm that it would cause, no regard to the students who feel erased, the staff who feel silenced, and no regard for the truth, equity, and even decency. This is not governance, it is cowardice wrapped in bureaucracy. You saw an opening to stripaway programs made for black, brown, indigenous, disabled voices, and you took it, and you did it while pretending your hands were tied. They were not. Some of your hands were ready. You're calling it compliance. I call it capitulation to ignorance, to fear, and to racism. To remove these programs is dispro- is disproportionately affecting black students and other students of color. That's not an option, it's a fact. You're threatening the supports that help them feel safe and included. There's a, this is a textbook violation of the First Amendment and federal anti-discrimination laws under Title Six. So to answer your question, you can and will be sued probably. And for what? To satisfy those who've always felt threatened by equality, equity, those who specialize in mediocrity and blame their inability to progress on diversity and inclusion and equity policies, to make the powerful more comfortable. You're not protecting the district, you're protecting a system that was never built to include us. But no, we see you. Because if your policies require the silencing of voices and destruction, then your policies are the problem. You don't get to break what you were never willing to build. I'm Bernita, thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Squibb, Ken Sutton, and then Ella Dunbar.
Thank you. I hear that you're gonna keep doing all of the excellent things that you've always done, you're just gonna change the way that you talk about it. That's great for me, um, but I don't think that the people who are anti-D E I will be satisfied by that. I expect you already know this is not the last demand that will be made of you. There will be more, you'll be threatened with losing your funding again. If you keep up with current events, you already know that one of the most recent demands that's being made of universities and academic journals and others is that they're mandating a very specific type of diversity. And I know that sounds silly that they're demanding diversity, but it's true. They're calling it viewpoint diversity, and it's being required of institutions, and they're threatening to pull funding if that diversity does not exist. For example, in the letter to Harvard, they were asked to adjust their hiring practices to ensure that there's a specific balance of conservative and liberal viewpoints, professors across the university, in every department, even in the student body. It's worth thinking about whether that's as easy to get around by changing the word diversity to wide variety. What will you do when you're asked to make those kinds of changes? There's a piece of Virginia history that I'll share, as I find it very interesting. It illustrates a time when a school board in Virginia stood up against the federal government because they're being directed to do something they thought was wrong. When, that's okay. Instead of complying with what the federal government directed them to do, they actually shut down the entire school division, all of it, for five years. Five years. This was in Prince Edward County from nineteen fifty-nine to nineteen sixty-four, and what they were being told to do, that they refused to do, was integrate schools. They closed all the schools rather than to comply with an order from the federal government that they disagreed with. I would really like to think that those school board members regretted that decision. But at the time, they believed in what they were doing, and they took action to push back against what they thought was an unjust demand from the federal government. Those of us who would want the world to be more free need to be at least as brave as those who would stand in the way of progress. Nobody here is asking you to shut down Virginia Beach City Public Schools. All anybody's asking for is for you to pause the resolution so that we can uh find out whether it's legal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ken Sutton, then Ella Dunbar, then Bert Stringfellow.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Honorable Board Members. I got two housekeeping items. I brought my glasses. And I'm gonna say, Matt. Matt, I'm gonna temper my comments from the last time I spoke to you. We'll talk offline later, okay? Five hours is how long I've been here. I have avoided some of my civic responsibilities for a long time by doing things as a service for my country and stuff. Paperwork, accountability, and follow-through is what I've taught my students. Tonight, I've had a chance to see all the paperwork, the accountability, not the best follow-through. And I just wanna let you know I appreciate what you do, and I'm gonna try to help you do it in the future. Okay, that can be good or bad for you, but I'm gonna try to help you do your job better. You know I'm a retired teacher? When I think about things, so to speak, I went to Catholic High School in Chicago, I didn't do well in math, I lived on one side of town, the school was in the middle, white kids are on this side, black kids over here. Florian, I can't think of his last name, took the bus, white s- white guy, took the bus from his school, from his residence, to my neighborhood. When my parent, my mother came in, she was like, "Who's he, or what's he doing here? We in my neighborhood." She said, "You walk him down to the bus stop, you get on the bus with him, and you make sure he gets home." That's what we had to deal with in the sixties, okay? Dr. Robinson, Robberson, I remember us starting the uh, I'm sorry, let me make sure I got the name right, the African-American Summit that we hosted at Tallwood. I was there, I remember when we did that. We had a little, little, little pushback, but look at where it is today. All I wanna remind you right now is, is that in seventeen eighty-seven, we were three-fifths, no women, landowners only. We gotta do better, we gotta do the right thing. It's not just a Spike Lee movie, stepping into the twenty-first century, we gotta continue to do the right thing. We cannot, and we've always heard this before, and I can't believe I'm gonna use it. We can't let outside interlopers mess up the good thing that we have in Virginia Beach. Can't let it happen. I never said those words before, I've been the outsider. But let's make sure we protect our values in Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ella Dunbar, and then Bert Stringfellow.
Good evening. I guess I must be that little kid that y'all were so concerned about that might be holding everybody back. So um, Mr. Callen, when you talked about a student who could not read, and that's part of the reason why you're basing your decision uh to vote the way you're gonna vote, and then I would think uh the school he came from, what kind of resources did they have? Was that child dyslexic? Was there something else going on? Did he have a medical issue? Well, never know, because it seems to me, I feel like people are talking behind my back, because you don't expect anything from me. So when you see a child struggling, you go, "Mm-hmm, yep, that's 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 how they are." Did you mean that all black kids, all black kids couldn't read? Uh, so what do you really know about the ability of students to learn? Uh, I'll tell you, when my school was desegregated, when I was ten years old, and I was a little black kid sitting in, probably about the only one or one or two sitting in a a classroom in the fifth grade, and we talked about, when, we read about the slaves coming ashore in sixteen nineteen, and one by one, all of the students in the class kinda discreetly tried to take a peek over at me to see what my reaction was. I knew the slaves, slaves came here, so maybe they were trying to see you, I don't know, does that hurt people? So I think you have to be, uh, just be careful that you think that you're so sure that non-minority students are holding back anybody you consider to be uh not perfect. I do know that I should, I really struggled that that fall semester. I was having a hard time, and I didn't understand why. I loved school, I was a good student. My mother transferred me back in the spring semester to my old school, just so I could calm down. But the following year in sixth grade, I came back, and I had no issues whatsoever, hit the ground running, didn't think anything more about it. I did struggle with some teacher, a a librarian who thought that I was not qualified as a black student to help carry books back to the library. My best friend was a little redhead girl named uh Elizabeth, and Elizabeth had asked, "Could I be the second helper?" And that woman screamed at her in front of everybody in the library, my teacher and everybody, and said, "No, she cannot help you bring the books back to the library to be reshelved." So maybe you need to think about, you know, some of the teachers may need uh some help with that, I know I did at that time, but if you're so concerned about academics, but you're not thinking about a former president who talked about being a, bragged about being a C student, who held him back? And the current president has made fun of disabled reporter, yet you happily follow his hateful policies. But um I know that, you know, I was able to come back, finish high school, go to O D U, get my bachelor's degree, and by the story previously told, you would have thrown me away or decided I was not worth um uh helping. But take it, take the time to see all students. Who knows? Maybe the majority of students will learn empathy, sympathy, and compassion. Maybe they'll make lifelong friends like I did. I got married twenty-three years ago, one of my bridesmaids was the first friend I made at hot side school.
And that is time.
A little blonde girl named Amy.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bert Stringfellow.
Hi, so I've been doing a lot of research on the D E I issue since it was first brought up here five weeks ago, uh mainly talking to a lot of conservatives. And what I'm finding in every case is that they can't point to a single specific program or initiative which they find problematic. And so I've asked them, you know, okay, if you can't find it, I, I messed, I messed up, let me find it here. But no matter how you, how hard you try to avoid the affirmative action argument, they just keep pulling me back in. So let's just get into it. It was only two lifetimes ago that we stopped the subjugation and brutalization of a people that lasted two hundred and fifty years. There are people walking around today who had grandparents who were still once enslaved, and that's pretty crazy. It was less than sixty years ago that we finally gave said people equal rights, and even then, they were still pushed into society's least-wanted jobs and literally had red lines drawn around their homes to prevent them from owning their own homes, the most important way to build generational wealth and enter the middle class. So is this stuff still a problem? Many say it's not, and we should just stop talking about it. Well, the average white household has seven times more wealth than the average black household. So if this is not still a problem, then what exactly is our thinking about all this, about the black households? Is it just that they, they just don't deserve it? Something's not right. Yes, it's true that we can't be held responsible for the sins of our father, but we also shouldn't benefit from them. And listen, I know what the solution is. I I don't know what the solution is. I don't know what's, what good looks like exactly, but what I do know is what bad looks like, and what this Trump administration is doing in terms of bigotry is really, really bad. So tonight, I just ask that you do what you can to help the situation. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, that was our last in-person speaker. We're going to move to our online speakers. Jamie Pari, please unmute.
Hi, good evening. Um, it's been a long night, but I'm gonna give it a whirl here. In doing so, I will address several board members directly. Ms. Brown, you are no doubt aware that in two thousand and ten, Green Run High School was one of three schools nationwide honored with the College Board Inspiration Award for improving its academic environment and expanding access to higher education for underserved students. Achievements like this are exactly what D E I supports, rolling back such- Rolling back such initiatives, especially under the vague guidance of a federal EO, risks undoing this progress if those same achievements are later deemed non-compliant. Mr. Callen, you voiced concerns that DEI is hindering real-world preparedness. But I ask you, if equity is abandoned and children are left behind, what kind of world will they be prepared for? Equity doesn't mean lowering standards. It means meeting students where they are and giving them the tools to succeed. If we truly want to prepare students for the real world, how about teaching them how to budget, build credit, pay bills, and pursue homeownerships, goals that are more out of reach than ever for the next generation of Americans? Ms. Weems, you pointed out that the programs like IEPs, free and reduced lunches, and ESL services and such are all federally protected, but we've all acknowledged that the EO's language is vague and open to broad and dangerous interpretation. So what happens if the federal government suddenly redefines these supports as wasteful or un-American? We're already witnessing federal changes that many once thought impossible, so we cannot assume stability. It's our responsibility to safeguard our children, not leave them vulnerable to shifting winds of political agendas. Mr. Culpepper, as a resident of District 8, I've heard you speak often about the importance of parental involvement in education. Your constituents have shown up by overwhelming support, asking to keep DEI in schools. So I urge you to listen to all of us, not just those whose views align with your politics. I feel like if you truly want what's best for our students, if we hope to be remembered as leaders who stood on the right side of history, then we have to pause this resolution. We owe it to our students to educate ourselves more fully on what's at stake and proceed with clarity, compassion, and courage. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Our next speaker, Speaker number two is not online, so we'll move to Richard Pickens. Please unmute.
Good evening. This is Pastor Rich Pickens, and I'd like to encourage the school administration to join President Trump's 1776 Commission. Our great country is going to celebrate 250 years of American independence on July 4th, 2026, and I thought maybe perhaps we could have June 29th through July 3rd, and that could become focused on Freedom Week, something like that. And I want to just say that I'm speaking for an enormous amount of people. I'll say the majority of people that are saying, "Thank you for bringing an end to DEI." In reading through the Representation Act and the Public Schools Educational Equity 5-4, I read through it, and I could take all of that thought right in a trash can, except for one thing that I do like. Under F, Curriculum and Instruction, it's what you really need for kids. Address disparities in course participation through middle and high schools, offering opportunities for supplementary coursework such as summer bridge programs, study skills, or tutoring during or after school to students interested in moving to higher-level courses. So I think there is some good in there, but the rest of it has got so much racism. That's all I hear talked about this last couple of weeks, racist. I think some people view this their racist lens, and it is not. We care about all students, and we think this racist language is a hindrance. And so anyway, I just want to say thank you to everybody who voted for, that I want to encourage you. Let's keep standing against DEI and other forms of discrimination, and have a great evening.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang. Please unmute.
Good evening. Actually, it's kind of interesting to listen to the whole meeting before speaking. Listening to the school board members tonight and in previous meetings, it sounds as if many members encourage dependence. I hear the statement that we must meet everyone where they are. And while that may be the case at times, most people grow unchallenged, when bars are raised, when things are difficult, and when they try and fail, and then try and fail, and then try and finally succeed. Ms. Franklin spoke clearly about where real personal success comes from, and what she described was not DEI, but, and by all measures, she has been very successful. What Ms. Franklin described is personal efforts, ambitions, sacrifice within each person. Mr. Cummings asked how we give students, quote, "the tools that they need," unquote. The answer is, we educate them to think, no matter the color of their skin or their background. To Dr. Robertson, he proudly, and I think rightfully, sorry, I just lost my place, he, he spoke about the success, actually, of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools around the state and the comparative, how comparatively well it does. And I think this is wonderful, and I believe he is correct. However, to truly address the need to remove DEI, we must look at US testing, not just within the states, but compared to other nations and address the US decline. Over the last decades, our nation has changed the focus of education, encouraging social engineering issues at the expense of focus on more rigorous subjects, the ones that educate and help all students succeed in life. And since this change of focus, the US test scores have drastically declined by comparison to other nations. This executive order and subsequent resolutions are designed not to harm students, but to refocus education from harmful social engineering to a more classic education, which will positively impact all students and their futures. On another note, tonight, a woman spoke vociferously against DEI and falsely remarked that all the speakers who spoke against DEI were white, and that was a sweeping, prejudicial statement. And it was disputed almost immediately as a non-white woman, two speakers after her, spoke against DEI. I am a DE, I am a DE white, DEI-opposed white woman, who has seen the effects of DEI in my own family. I've been married over 40 years to a man who is not white and has spoken multiple times against DEI. Our children are obviously biracial, and as their mom, I can state that they took great offense to the classification of themselves into required racial groups during their education. They considered it ridiculous, in their case, being asked to choose race on a form. Their choice did not exist, as they said it was American. Being asked to classify themselves as to race at school was a source of ridicule and discussion, and they found these questions racist. Members of our family have even been asked to fill quotas. My husband, like that speaker's husband, is also a first-generation American and Naval Academy graduate, proud grandson of Chinese peasants. Before emigrating to the United States, they came here without equity programs and became extremely successful here, not because they looked at, they looked at not what they could not do, but what they could. So do not pause this.
And that is time. And Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
I just want to first, before we move on, I want to thank everyone that came out to speak. I, I know there's a lot of passionate feelings, and so I appreciate everyone coming out. We are now on to action, because there is no consent agenda, so I would have, I would ask for a motion to approve our personnel report and administrative appointments as Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve our personnel report and administrative appointments.
So Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the, the personnel report.
Thank you. We are on to be 2025.
Point of one, Madam Chair, we do have some appointments.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Dr. Robertson.
Thank you. I'm pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Dawn Vang, currently an assistant principal at John Bedai Elementary School, to be the next principal at Pembroke Elementary School. And one more, we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Julie Spencer, currently a technology, I'm sorry, a technical services support supervisor in the Department of Technology to be the next coordinator of customer support and quality assurance in the Department of Technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I call for a motion to approve the 2025 VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the 2025 VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award.
So Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the 2025 VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award.
Thank you. We are now on to general fees, Schedule 2526. I call for a motion to approve the general fees, Schedule 2526, as presented. Moved by Ms. Dwyer. Seconded by Dr. Green. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to approve the fiscal year 2526 general fee schedule as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the general fee schedule for 2526.
Thank you. We are now on to tie vote procedure pursuant to Code of Virginia 22.1-75, motion from May 6, 2025, special meeting. The motion is to amend the previous vote, namely to amend the April 8, 2025 School Board Resolution to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance to pause the listed portions of the April 8 Resolution until the federal courts have ruled whether Executive Order 14190 can be enforced, Sections 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6. And Section 2, the second sentence regarding suspension of all equity program offerings that do not comply with the above federal guidance, including but not limited to the Equity Plan, the Equity Dashboard, and any educational program offering that would not comply. Is there a motion to pause? Moved by Dr. Green, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Mr. Cummings?
It's more of a point of information. If we could just explain to the general public, I don't know, Ms. Lanetti, if you can explain to the general public why we're revoting.
Virginia Code 22.175 requires when the school board reaches a tie vote, when all members are not present, which happened at the last meeting. You only had 10 of your 11 members meeting, you, and you have a tie vote, you need to pass it to the next meeting, so it was set for this meeting, and it requires that you shall vote on it again.
So I'm going to call for the vote, and I just want to make sure, yes, vote is amend previous vote and pause. No vote is to continue the resolution as it was. So I'm going to restate the motion to amend the April 8, 2025 School Board Resolution to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance to pause the below-listed portions, the April 8 Resolution until federal courts have ruled whether Executive Order 14190 can be enforced, Sections 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Resolution Section 2 with the second sentence regarding suspension of all educational program offerings that do not comply with the above federal guidance, including but not limited to the Equity Plan, the Equity Dashboard, and any educational program offerings that would not comply. And so I call for the vote on that. No, it's not up.
Okay. So, Ms. Brown, how do you vote?
No.
So Madam Chair, we have five ayes and six nays, so the motion did not pass.
Thank you. We are now to committee, organization, and board reports. Does anyone have anything to report? Dr. Green?
On Thursday evening, I had an opportunity, and I know Mr. Callen, we didn't plan to go together, but he was there, to the English Learners Achievers Recognition Ceremony. And there were 41 students who, from different countries, they were recognized for mastering English skills. And what was a bonus, Mayor Dyer was their featured speaker, and you can go back and look at the video, and he did acknowledge and, and shared his appreciation, which I appreciated, referencing the importance of having diversity and inclusion and abilities within the Virginia Beach community. It was a great ceremony, to see the excitement of the families that are now, have been a part of our community. So it was a great, thank you.
Voice, Chair Weems?
Yes, just to kind of go over some dates for my colleagues to try to remember to glance at their calendar, our calendar gets really busy at this time of year. But May 14 is Pitch Night at Kempfville High School. May 19 is the Teacher Assistant End-of-the-Year Program at Landstown High School. May 21 is the Policy Review Committee Meeting. Also, May 21 is the GED Graduation at Renaissance Academy. May 22 is the Brickle Scholarship Awards, and May 28 is the Teacher Assistant Art Show. So a lot of these have required our RSVPs, so just, just check your calendar and, and make sure if you, if you said you were going, try to go. Thank you.
Ms. Lanetti, do we have any business remaining for closed?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We are adjourned. It is 11:23 PM.